Welcome to the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular scheduled meeting for Findlay City Council. My name is Grant Russell. I'm council pro tem and sitting over here in the seat of Mr. Harrington, council president, as Mr. Harrington is absent tonight. And so I'll be trying to fill in for his shoes. We'll start this meeting with roll call.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Mr. DeArmond?
Here.
Ms. Frishy?
Here.
Mr. Greeno?
Present.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
And Mr. Wobser?
Present.
And Mr. Harrington did inform me that he was going to be absent for tonight's meeting, would request Mr. Baumann that move to excuse him. Second, Mr. Greeno, all in favor of excusing Mr. Harrington, please say aye.
Aye.
And he is excused. We'll now move into the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three, we have, let's bring this a little closer. We have three sets of meetings from our December third public hearing for Zero Glessner Avenue rezone, December third public hearing minutes for rezone of seventeen hundred Western Avenue, and the acceptance of our December third regular session of council. And look for a motion.
Move to accept those, the minutes from those meetings?
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. They are accepted. Add-ons, replacements, and removals from the agenda, Mr. Wobser, you're up unless Mr., unless you're not ready and Mr. Palmer can handle it.
Oh, shoot, I'm ready. We have one add-on, which is a mayor's Tiff district presentation, reports that, and that's being added to the reports of municipal officers and municipal departments. We have a replacement, which was the, from the discussion last week on resolution zero four zero, two thousand and twenty-four, just a revised Exhibit A. And then the second part of that was number, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one forty-three. And this was a revision on the unhoused camps and public sleeping legislation second, section, and they're revised Exhibit A. And then we have a removal, ordinance number twenty twenty-four one fifty-four, which was a cannabis dispensary zoning legislation that has been removed. That's in the form of a motion to be approved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Hellman. Questions or comments? Mr. Hellman?
I've got a question in terms of why did, why are we removing twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-four?
I've been, I've been informed that the desire is to have that go to, to be referred to City Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Committee, and for us to take a look at it and then bring back any recommended changes so that a, if, if, if the desire is to amend it, the amendments to the legislation and the legislation can all get hurt at the same time, instead of having it going through kind of two parallel paths, they want it to go two sequentially.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Other questions or comments? All in favor of approving the add-ons, replacements, and removals, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, and the agenda has been amended. We have no proclamations, recognitions of retirements, petitions, or oral communications. We have a written communication.
An email from Michael Van Hoos, Diversified Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Not Your Mama's Girl Cheese, regarding more food truck drama.
Questions or comments? Email be filed. Moving on to reports of municipal officers and municipal departments.
City income tax monthly collections report for November two thousand and twenty-four.
Comments? Report be filed.
Wait, I have a comment.
Oh, sorry, so, Mr. DeArmond?
Thank you. Since we're in the middle of balancing our budget, I think we need to take a minute to look at this income tax report. So, if you could pull that out and take a look at it with me. So, looking at comparing at the top there, comparing twenty-four to twenty-three, so after eleven months, we're not really having that strong of a year, right? So, we're down nine point six five percent. So, then if you go down to the bottom, our actuals, after eleven months, we've collected thirty million, three sixty-two. So, after eleven months, we're three point eight percent above our, our year-end projection. If you slide over to the far right, you'll see the, the year-end projection was twenty-nine million, two fifty. So, after eleven months, we're already three point eight percent above our projection. So, if you take that thirty million, three sixty-two, divide it by eleven months and get your run rate, and you multiply it by twelve months, you come up with thirty-three million, one twenty-three. So, that, and you divide that by the, the year-end projection, twenty-nine, two fifty. You come up with, we're, we're, if you just continue the run rate, assuming December is a typical month, right? We're going to be thirteen point two percent over our projection this year for revenue. Think about that for a minute, we're at thirteen point two. I'm not done, Jim, hang on. So, if you look at the budget book, then the budget book says we're going to be at thirty-five, seven seventy, divide that by the twenty-nine, two fifty, we're twenty-two point three percent over the projection. So, what say ye?
Mr. Stajak?
Oh, if income tax projections were that easy, Mary and I would both be living a life in a different tropical island somewhere around the world, but it doesn't work that way.
Okay.
The interesting thing is, there is no linear progression in the income taxes. As a matter of fact, it took us getting rid of the deferrals for us to even normalize the statistical analysis of the fact. So, starting in two thousand and twenty-five, we, we should have an applicable statistical analysis that's within generally, when I did it prior to the deferrals, it was normally within three to three and a half percent on a bad year, two and a half to two and a quarter percent on a good year. If you look at those same numbers you're pointing to, this year, we have a business tax receipts of six million dollars. Mary projected those at three million dollars for this year. The income tax projections that I used were Mary's. I felt she had more insight and it was more reasonable to use her numbers because she has access to files and information that I don't have in my office, which is unusual for a city, by the way. Normally, the fiscal officer, excuse me, I've got a cold. Normally, the fiscal officer has full access to the income tax information in the cities around the state. Since I don't, I have to do some extrapolating, but what ends up happening is, we had three huge years of business tax windfall, this year being one of them. Now, one of the things that's happened going into twenty-five is, we're going to put some, I guess, blind faith into a projection of six million dollars for business tax income next year. There's no precedent for that in a year without a windfall or an anomaly. Typically, three to four, hold on, nope, nope.
Not next year. I'm talking about this year, not, not next year.
Mr. DeArmond?
Sorry.
Three to four million is typical. So, I, in, in projecting for next year, we've projected six million. In this year, the other thing that's happened, which is really interesting, is that we have a three million dollar refund that I think you're finishing your vote on tonight, just shy, two point eight, eight fifty. That's a huge refund. Income tax projections have generally a couple very large months, April and October being two of them. We're back to normal on that. Our general revenues, some months are big, some months are small, but to do a, a linear division, divide by twelve or divide by eleven and multiply by twelve is not practical, it would not be reasonable. And if you have a year of income tax like you're suggesting you're going to have, or with the general revenues, we're very blessed indeed. I do not expect that to happen at all, but each year, again, none of us have a crystal ball. So, what we do is, we project the revenue as realistically as we can. Those revenues, because you've commented on both the income tax and the general revenues, I was going to wait until we got to report a little later in the packet, but generally speaking, there's been a lot of comments on the interest income as well with the general revenue. The interest income was nonexistent until a few years, when rates went from basically zero point to five, twenty-five basis points, twenty-five bips, as an investor would say, to now, we've gotten as high as five plus percent in some of the investments that have been for the city for the last four months. Two things have happened. One, you have spent, you have spent in this calendar year as a council, your general fund balance down from over thirty million dollars to a projected year-end balance of twenty-one million. That's one-third of your general fund cash gone by the end of this year. Also, the budget that's been presented reasonably presumes you're going to spend it down significantly again in two thousand and twenty-five, and you spent it down in two thousand and twenty-three. So, you have three consecutive years of spending down large cash balances, which has an impact on interest rates. Plus, the Fed is lowering interest rates significantly, and we expect them to lower throughout the year. So, you take all that into consideration, you have a lot of downward pressure on your budgets. Now, here's the beauty of it. I, by state law, only project your revenue. They mandate that I project them, and generally, when you take out windfalls, grants, and special monies that come in, that in the budget book, it very openly says, I don't project. So, if you read the whole budget book, and if you read the paragraph, there's a paragraph in there that says, I don't project certain things that could have a major impact, like business tax returns. It, it's generally accepted and generally shown that my projections are, are within three to five percent, and I'm very pleased with that. The beautiful thing about that is, I don't have any control over the budget. Your spending that you provide to the administration and their use of those funds, so you have two sides of this equation, and I would encourage you to consider both sides. And I would also encourage you in the future, if you want to talk about revenues, talk to me before a meeting or sit down with me, and let's talk to them in general, because last, we talked in the last email I had from you, Mr. DeArmond, we were going to sit down in January and discuss some of these things. Happy to discuss it in a public meeting, but I think the public deserves better, and I don't think they deserve a misrepresentation of what's going on with our revenues, because they're very complex, they're very detailed, and I review hundreds of revenue items line by line by line, every budget season. Every revenue we receive is viewed by me, I put questions out to your departments as well as your, your administration here and say, what user fees are you raising next year? To which they've said, none. So, I have to project my revenue on the basis you're not going to get additional fees. There's a lot of things that happen. I look forward to talking to them in the future, and hopefully, we do it in a more reasonable setting.
Mr. DeArmond?
So, you're dragging in the whole expense side. I'm just talking about this revenue projection, and I'm talking about this year. And this year, we're off, from what I can see, it's, we'll, we'll see what, how it plays out in January, but I mean, I mean, it's not that difficult. I mean, you're, I mean, you're projecting, the budget is projecting this calendar year thirty-five, seven seventy, which is twenty-two percent over the initial projection from the beginning of the year. I mean, that's just a lot to be off, you know? And you talked about this meeting. I am interested in the, in the investment income, and we're going to talk about that in January. I was going to bring that up, but we don't need to.
Mr. Stajak?
And again, you've left out a significant part of the equation. In that same year you're talking about, you've spent down the general fund balance by almost more than ten million dollars, number one, and number two, you've completely ignored the fact that I told you in that same budget that you're looking at, that you would start, that you would start two thousand and twenty-five with approximately twenty-three million dollars. And you will start two thousand and twenty-five with twenty-three million dollars less this two million dollar flood appropriation to the flood account that was not expected when that was done. So, you can parse numbers any way you want to dispute accuracy, but I don't think you're being realistic in the presentation to the public. I get it, you're a math guy, and I'm a math guy, and I can point to every number that I got right, and you can point to every number I got wrong, and in the end, you're not doing this room any justice, so I don't appreciate it, but we'll talk through it, and we'll take a professional approach, and you'll look at it next year, but I guarantee you, if these, if this budget holds true, which it's likely to do without some major changes, you're going to spend down from twenty-one down to significantly below twenty million dollars.
Other, other questions or comments? Report be filed.
Findlay Fire Department Activities Report for November two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Findlay Police Department Activities Report for November two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Findlay Municipal Court Activities Report for November two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Treasurers Reconciliation Report of November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Summary Financial Reports for November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Reports be filed.
Traffic Commission Minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Minutes be filed.
Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Minutes be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding Findlay Fire Department Ballistic Vests and Plates.
Questions or comments? What do I say?
Report be filed?
Oh, is that a?
Or letter be filed?
Letter be filed? Sorry, a little brain melt there. Excitement for Christmas, I guess.
Letter from City Engineer Cal regarding eighteen hundred Tiffin Avenue Access Utilities, Project Number three one nine, four seven three, zero zero.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frishy?
I'd like to have a little discussion on this request of the two hundred thousand. We did get made aware of it, I think, after the last appropriation or strategic planning meeting, I can't remember what we had last. But this project is two hundred thousand dollars that we were originally told you were talking about moving water lines. But I think it's imperative and important to note that this is all on private property. And so, we're, we're taking city dollars and putting it towards a private developer's improvement, and that is not typically what we do on, on the water side or the sewer side. And then Jeremy sent an email out this morning, and he talked about grease in the sewer lines, and we were going to look at that. Now, all of our sewer lines that are city-owned property are already lined, so all of Croy Drive, Tiffin Avenue, up to the Chicken, the New Chicken Place, Canes, and then it crosses over and goes to Queenswood. So, those sewer lines are all intact. So, I don't know how we could be having this discussion and bringing legislation for private development on private property when it's not our responsibility, and when we do things like this, we start setting a precedence for other developers coming in and asking for the same benefits. So, I just think this is something that definitely needs to go to water and sewer, and we definitely need to make sure that everybody is getting the full picture.
Mr. Cal?
So, as we discussed in the meeting, we did discuss the three items that I had listed on there. It wasn't just the water line. The water line itself, even though it is on private property, is within a water easement. So, it is a public utility on that property that we maintain. So, it is our water, public water line that people are coming off of that, so we are responsible for that. So, as we discussed in that meeting as well, with this new, new development, they are going to be tearing up all the asphalt in that area. They're going to have to be relocating some of the fire hydrants in that area for, for safety, for ease of safety, so that way, we're not getting any of those hit. We're going to be having them move their service lines because of the new building design. We got to have a better way to have those service lines be able to, instead of going from the front, they're going to be coming from the back. Well, when you're pulling off of those, you just don't want to keep pulling taps off of the same area, because then that are, you know, more taps in one area or more fittings is making a weak point. We're trying to eliminate as many of those points as we can on the water line side, so that way, once that thing gets paved again, we don't have to go back in there in five years, and now we're tearing back up this, the parking lot, serving all that parking lot within there, and then fixing that. So, while there, we have an opportunity to fix that stuff, that was where the water lines come through. The second thing was the drive entrance going out of the south onto two twenty-four there. Right now, right next to the Canes, it's, it's pretty close to the intersection. With the new business coming in that area, we wanted to move that down to the west to create more separation from the drives from the intersection, so that'd be a safer corridor within that. Well, when you move that, there's a sign there, there's an island there, there's curb that you're going to have to change, there's new drives you're going to have to change, so there's a lot of work that's going to be included with that, moving that down. So, moving to a hundred and fifty feet, yes, it doesn't sound like that much, but that's creating more of a sight distance and a stopping distance away from the intersections and any kind of other drives that are in there. So, if, as people are going out there, that will create a safety, safer exit for them. And then with the grease, what I was talking about, we've had problems with that in that area of, with the businesses in there, I can't tell you which one it is or anything like that, but those feed into our main line. If we are getting grease into our main line, okay, you can think, but I talked to the, talked to the field guys, so we have received calls from there of getting grease in there. So, we want to make sure while they're in there doing the work, that we do not have any problems in the future. So, when everyone's doing in that, all that work in that area, we want to make sure that everything is a hundred percent before we're moving forwards and saying, go ahead and pave over top all that stuff.
Mr. Stajak?
Thank you. I just want to mention, I want to take advantage of something we talked about in the budget meeting, and that is, this is a water line project, and if you're talking about grease, I'm assuming you're talking about grease in the wastewater lines, but either way, it's water and sewer money. So, in theory, if you move this money from capital improvements as part of this legislation, you are subsidizing your water and sewer funds, and is that reasonable and appropriate is the question council should be asking. I can pay for it out of anywhere, it's certainly a legal expenditure, but the question is, is it a proper place to take the money from in regard to your planning and how you're running those two funds?
Mayor Mern?
Yeah, I was just going to add, obviously, Engineer Cal did a great job of giving an overview with the extensive amount of work that would be done, in my opinion. It, it would cost us much more to go back and remedy these situations later, rather than coordinating upfront and being able to use the tax dollars wisely to be able to do the work while it's already torn up and make those repairs, rather than having to come back in, tear new asphalt up, disturb business, and then have to make potential service impacts to those properties, and then fix the asphalt again.
Ms. Frishy?
I think we're, we're having a lot of issues with transparency and, and wordsmithing, and, and it's, it's gotten old a long time ago for me, and I think we're seeing more of it now that we're looking at a deficit budget. But Jeremy, the grease calls that you have had have been on private property. Yes, there is an easement for the water line that runs through the mall parking lot, but there's been, I've checked it to see if we've had any major water leaks, repairs, anything in that area, and you don't have it. You don't. And the sewer lines are lined, so their integrity has been improved. It is not our responsibility, no matter how much we want to help anybody in the community, we can't constantly keep throwing, oh, it's just a hundred thousand, it's just two hundred thousand at something, because it's improper. And it's improper for you to say that there's an issue, because you're not disclosing that it's on private property is where you're having the issue, and it is the private property owner's responsibility. And when they go to Planning Commission and they get told, hey, we're going to approve your project because you need to change an access point, it's their responsibility. So, what we're actually doing is, we're making this setup for all freestanding structures on that lot, and it's not our responsibility, but I would appreciate if you would stop wordsmithing.
Other questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Neighborhood Revitalization Grant from the Findlay Hancock County Community Foundation.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Sorry. Letter from City Auditor Stajak regarding year-end items to transfer and appropriate, appropriate. He is asking that the first paragraph of his letter be read.
Mr. Wobser?
Make a motion to do that. Just the first. Just the first paragraph.
Second, Ms. Frishy. All, all those in favor of having the first paragraph of this read into the record, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay. How many?
Two nays.
Nays. Three nays. The first paragraph will be read.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Findlay Police Department Activities Report for November twenty twenty four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Findlay Municipal Court Activities Report for November twenty twenty four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Treasures Reconciliation Report of November thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Questions or comments? Report be filed.
Summary Financial Reports for November thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Questions or comments? Reports be filed.
Traffic Commission Minutes of October twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Questions or comments? Minutes be filed.
Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes of November fourteen, twenty twenty four.
Questions or comments? Minutes be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding Findlay Fire Department Ballistic Vests and Plates.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed. Sorry, a little brain melt there. Excitement for Christmas, I guess.
Letter from City Engineer Cal regarding eighteen hundred Tiffin Avenue Access Utilities, Project Number three one nine four seven three zero zero.
Questions or comments, Ms. Frishy?
Um, I'd like to have a little discussion on this request of the two hundred thousand. We did get made aware of it, I think, after the last appropriation or strategic planning meeting. I can't remember what we had last. But this project is two hundred thousand dollars that we were originally told you were talking about moving water lines. But I think it's imperative and important to note that this is all on private property. And so we're taking city dollars and putting it towards a private developer's improvement. And that is not typically what we do on on the water side or the sewer side. And then Jeremy sent an email out this morning, and he talked about grease in the sewer lines. We were going to look at that. Now, all of our sewer lines that are city-owned property are already lined. So all of Croy Drive, Tiffin Avenue up to the Chicken, the New Chicken Place, Canes, and then it crosses over and goes to Queenswood. So those sewer lines are all intact. So I don't know how we could be having this discussion and bringing legislation for private development on private property when it's not our responsibility. And when we do things like this, we start setting a precedence for other developers coming in and asking for the same benefits. So I just think this is something that definitely needs to go to water and sewer, and we definitely need to make sure that everybody is getting the full picture.
Mr. Cal.
So as we discussed in the meeting, we did discuss the three items that I had listed on there. It wasn't just the water line. The water line itself, even though it is on private property, is within a water easement. So it is a public utility on that property that we maintain. So it is our water, public water line that people are coming off of that. So we are responsible for that. So as we discussed in that meeting as well, with this new development, they are going to be tearing up all the asphalt in that area. They're going to have to be relocating some of the fire hydrants in that area for safety, for ease of safety. So that way, we're not getting any of those hit. We're going to be having them move their service lines because of the new building design. We've got to have a better way to have those service lines be able instead of going from the front, they're going to be coming from the back. Well, when you're pulling off of those, you just don't want to keep pulling taps off of the same area because then that are, you know, more taps in one area or more fittings is making a weak point. We're trying to eliminate as many of those points as we can on the water line side. So that way, once that thing gets paved again, we don't have to go back in there in five years. And now we're tearing back up the parking lot, serving all that parking lot within there and then fixing that. So while there, we have an opportunity to fix that stuff. That was where the water lines come through. The second thing was the drive entrance going out of the south onto two twenty four there. Right now, right next to the Canes, it's pretty close to the intersection. With the new business coming in that area, we wanted to move that down to the west to create more separation from the drives from the intersection so that it'd be a safer corridor within that. Well, when you move that, there's a sign there, there's an island there, there's curb that you're going to have to change, there's new drives you're going to have to change. So there's a lot of work that's going to be included with that, moving that down. So moving to a hundred and fifty feet, yes, it doesn't sound like that much, but that's creating more of a sight distance and a stopping distance away from the intersections and any kind of other drives that are in there. So as people are going out there, that will create a safer exit for them. And then with the grease, what I was talking about, we've had problems with that in that area of with the businesses in there. I can't tell you which one it is or anything like that, but those feed into our main line. If we are getting grease into our main line, okay, you can think, but I talked to the, talked to the field guys. So we have received calls from there of getting grease in there. So we want to make sure while they're in there doing the work, that we do not have any problems in the future. So when everyone's doing in that, all that work in that area, we want to make sure that everything is a hundred percent before we're moving forwards and saying, go ahead and pave over top all that stuff.
Mr. Stajak.
Hey, thank you. I just want to mention, I want to take advantage of something we talked about in the budget meeting, and that is, this is a water line project. And if you're talking about grease, I'm assuming you're talking about grease in the wastewater lines. But either way, it's water and sewer money. So in theory, if you move this money from capital improvements as part of this legislation, you are subsidizing your water and sewer funds. And is that reasonable and appropriate is the question council should be asking. I can pay for it out of anywhere. It's certainly a legal expenditure, but the question is, is it a proper place to take the money from in regard to your planning and how you're running those two funds?
Mayor Mern.
Yeah, I was just going to add, obviously, Engineer Cal did a great job of giving an overview with the extensive amount of work that would be done. In my opinion, it would cost us much more to go back and remedy these situations later rather than coordinating upfront and being able to use the tax dollars wisely to be able to do the work while it's already torn up and make those repairs rather than having to come back in, tear new asphalt up to serve business and then have to make potential service impacts to those properties and then fix the asphalt again.
Ms. Frishy.
I think we're, we're having a lot of issues with transparency and wordsmithing and it's it's gotten old a long time ago for me. And I think we're seeing more of it now that we're looking at a deficit budget. But Jeremy, the grease calls that you have had have been on private property. Yes, there is an easement for the water line that runs through the mall parking lot. But there's been, I've checked it to see if we've had any major water leaks, repairs, anything in that area, and you don't have it. You don't. And the sewer lines are lined. So their integrity has been improved. It is not our responsibility, no matter how much we want to help anybody in the community, we can't constantly keep throwing, oh, it's just a hundred thousand, it's just two hundred thousand at something because it's improper. And it's improper for you to say that there's an issue because you're not disclosing that it's on private property is where you're having the issue. And it is the private property owner's responsibility. And when they go to Planning Commission and they get told, hey, we're going to approve your project because you need to change an access point, it's their responsibility. So what we're actually doing is we're making this setup for all freestanding structures on that lot. And it's not our responsibility, but I would appreciate if you would stop wordsmithing.
Other questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Neighborhood Revitalization Grant from the Findlay Hancock County Community Foundation.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Letter from City Auditor Stajak regarding year-end items to transfer and appropriate. Appropriate. He is asking that the first paragraph of his letter be read.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to do that. Just the first paragraph.
Second, Ms. Frishy. All those in favor of having the first paragraph of this read into the record, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay. How many, nays? Three nays. The first paragraph will be read.
The following accounts require an appropriation or a transfer for this budget year so that the city may remain in compliance with Ohio Revised Code and Audit. It is important that rules be suspended and the legislation for these transfers be passed at your December seventeenth meeting in order to remain in compliance. I have listed below the amount of each request and corresponding reason for the appropriation or transfer.
Questions or comments? Letter. How did you have a question? Okay, thanks. Letter be filed.
Uh, let's see. A letter from Mayor Mern regarding a grant from the Findlay Hancock County Community Foundation for the Immigration Task Force Communications Project.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
A letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Cordania regarding Cannabis Dispensary Amendments to Findlay Zoning Code.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Add-on Tiff District's.
Well, let's change that. Let's refer to that to instead the City Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Committee for their January ninth, twenty twenty five, meeting.
I'll second.
Nope, I think I could just do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Add-on Tiff District's December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, presentation from Mayor Mern.
Questions or comments? Presentation be filed. Committee reports.
The Planning and Zoning Committee to whom was referred a request from Timothy Bechtel on behalf of the Hancock County Commissioners to vacate the east-west alley between lots forty-five to forty-eight and forty-nine to fifty-two in the Findlay Edition and South Cory Street and the North Alley. Said request was tabled during the November fourteenth, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting. This request remains tabled.
You have to accept the report.
I don't know that there is a report.
Was there a report on this?
No.
There is, there is no report. There's nothing to accept. Next one.
Planning and Zoning Committee to whom was referred a request to continue September twelfth, twenty twenty four, October tenth, twenty twenty four, and November fourteenth, twenty twenty four discussions on cannabis dispensary zoning. We recommend the creation of legislation that, if adopted, would create a cannabis overlay district for currently zoned C-two properties in the following areas: Tiffin Avenue, I-75 at County Road ninety-nine, I-75 at West Main Cross Street, and I-75 at Trenton Avenue West of I-75. This would limit the number of retail establishments selling cannabis products to two, would repeal the existing cannabis moratorium for retail establishments, and would add the manufacturing, growing, and processing of cannabis products as a continual use in I-one districts.
Questions or comments? Mr. Baumann.
Yeah, I guess I would just kind of like to highlight for the other members of council. I know it's there kind of in front of you in black and white, but this was really kind of the culmination of several discussions, not only amongst the committee but with Matt Cordania from Regional Planning. And I did just kind of want to highlight the overlay district concept. I think that this was important to the committee in that we clearly define not just that we are allowing such facilities to come to this town, but we thought it important to lay in boundaries that where we, that they might be able to establish and set up shop and do business. And those are highlighted there in the bullet points for you. I guess I don't have a whole lot of anything else from the rest of the committee.
Other questions or comments? Report, all those in favor of the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, how about a motion to accept the committee report? Tell you, we'll get this right by the end of the meeting, I promise. Mr. Diarmant.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Second, Mr. Baumann. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor of accepting the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The committee report is accepted.
Planning and Zoning Committee to whom was referred a request to discuss onsite parking requirements for new residential developments. We recommend to continue discussions of onsite parking requirements.
Motion, Mr. Diarmant.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Second, Mr. Baumann. Questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Committee report is accepted. Rolling on to legislation.
Third reading for Resolution thirty-five, twenty twenty four. A resolution stating what services the City of Findlay, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Findlay, Ohio, situated in Marion Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the southeast quarter of Section Thirty, Township One North, Range Eleven East, a tract of land consisting of five point one two five acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Barfell Hobart Avenue Annexation.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve Resolution number zero three five dash twenty twenty four.
Second, Mr. Hellman. Questions or comments? All in favor of the resolution, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted.
Third reading for Resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty four. A resolution stating what services the City of Findlay, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Findlay, Ohio, situated in Marion Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the Buckeye Edition and part of the southeast quarter of Section Thirty, Township One North, Range Eleven East, Marion Township, a tract of land consisting of thirteen point zero three five acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Barfell Hobart Avenue Annexation.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for adoption, Resolution number zero three six dash two zero two four.
Second, Mr. Baumann. Questions or comments? All those in favor of adoption of this resolution, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
And Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted.
First reading for Resolution forty, twenty twenty four. A resolution approving the expenditures made by the Auditor's Office on the attached list of vouchers which either exceed the purchase order or were incurred without a purchase order exceeding the statutory limit of three thousand dollars, all in accordance with Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven oh five point forty-one D. This includes the amended exhibit.
Replaced exhibit, yeah.
Replaced, excuse me, exhibit.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve Resolution forty, twenty twenty four.
Second, Mr. Greeno. Questions or comments? Ms. Frishy.
Just a question on the self-insurance that we were over by that twenty-six five. Is that normal?
Mr. Martin.
So it was just how the buckets of dollars for the different types of insurances were allocated. So it's, for instance, they did liability insurance a little differently. So it's hitting, it's not hitting the departments and it's under the general liability where inland marina, for instance, is actually fifty-eight thousand less than what was budgeted in that bucket originally. So it's just moving the dollars how it was invoiced. So it's essentially a wash, but this one was over the original invoice that that was. That's why we needed to do this.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of approval of the adoption of the resolution, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted.
First reading for Resolution forty-one, twenty twenty four. A resolution transferring funds within appropriated funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve Resolution forty-one, twenty twenty four.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Questions or comments? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution zero four one dash twenty twenty four, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. On to ordinances.
Third reading for Ordinance twenty twenty four dash one hundred thirty-three, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty four dash one thirty-three.
Second, Mr. Wobser. Questions or comments? Mr. Stajak.
I'm going to kindly ask that you amend this ordinance to read from the general fund to a city income tax other. There isn't an adequate amount of money. That'll take care of it. And that was the plan at the beginning. The legislation reads incorrectly.
Mr. Wobser.
Jim, would you repeat that real quick? That wording?
Um, just from general fund.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to amend the legislation to read from the general fund.
I'll second.
Looks like Diarmant's seconding. I'm not sure.
Jim, I'm not, where are we specifically saying this and this? Are you, are you looking for? Okay, okay. So to, so I understand that you were saying what Jim just showed me. We're looking at the, in Section One, the from, changing city income tax fund to general fund.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And second, Mr. Diarmant. Slow day for the president pro tem. So we have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance, and that requires a vote. All those in favor of amending the ordinance as, or questions or comments on the amendment? All those in favor of amending the ordinance as requested, please say aye after your, or please say aye. We'll do this on voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to amending the ordinance, please say nay. The ordinance is amended. So now we have ordinance twenty twenty four dash one three three as amended. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance two zero two four dash one three three as amended, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Greeno, sorry.
Aye.
We got them all.
I hope so.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance twenty twenty four, one hundred thirty-four as amended, an ordinance establishing job classifications, pay ranges, salary schedules, and other matters that may affect pay for all non-elected officers and employees of the City of Findlay, Ohio, and repealing Ordinance twenty twenty three ninety-seven as amended, Ordinance twenty twenty three one twenty four, Ordinance twenty twenty four twenty four, and all other ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wobser.
Since this ordinance is a big part of our budget discussion that we'll have at the end of the meeting, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to table this ordinance.
Second, Mr. Palmer. We have to table to when?
To the end of the meeting. Old business.
Okay.
And we'll reconsider at that point once we have the overall discussion on the budget.
Motion to table to the end of the meeting. All those in favor of tabling this ordinance until the end of the meeting, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Nay.
Ms. Warnicki.
Nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Nay.
Mr. Diarmant.
Nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Nay.
So, seven. Seven, nay, three in favor.
The motion to table fails. So we have, it's been read, we're looking for a motion for adoption. Mr. Diarmant.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty four dash one thirty-four.
As amended.
It was amended last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, as amended, sorry. I can read.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Baumann. Discussion. Mr. Wobser.
So this was the last big piece of the budget that we had to approve. And the only reason I wanted to do this was to give us the ability to have a discussion on the overall budget before we approved this, which is a huge chunk of what we're talking about. Had nothing to do with that beyond that. This is, there are some issues with this that I think need to be discussed at length. And I suspect we're going to get into that here in just a second.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Frishy.
So I was obviously in favor of tabling to the end only because we had such a big budget discussion and wanting to reduce the budget by four percent for next year. You know, I don't know that that's really our responsibility to have to get into making cuts for the administration and different things. They need to do that. But with the salary ordinance going on for non-union employees, you know, we're adding that two dollar and thirty-one cent an hour on to everybody's base. We are also adding into their, the four percent pay increase. And on top of that, you're adding in a new salary level, if you guys reviewed that salary ordinance. And by doing that, we also heard during the budget that their new leadership tower that the administration is choosing to use, which is totally their prerogative to use that, had already said that they already have promotions being done that are hinging on this salary ordinance passing. And if we are seriously talking about wanting to get our numbers in order and the administration, administration cutting their budget by four percent, remember you're going to pass Ordinance One. And as soon as we pass that, money can be spent, promotions can be done. And then what? So I would make a motion to amend the ordinance without getting into the nitty-gritty of going through this whole entire salary ordinance. I think we should add in a line into this ordinance that says that there'll be no promotional, no promotional pay increases, no promotional movements without council's approval until we are running in the black and not the red. And then once we get there, we can remove that back out. But otherwise, I guess I'm a little surprised that council didn't want to have the other discussion at the end of the meeting before before making a final ruling on this salary ordinance because I just don't know how we can pass it when things are so unknown.
So Ms. Frishy, to clarify your motion, what section would you like that language added to?
I guess I would, I would ask Rob where we would need to place that. It would be its own section, I would assume, that council would have the authority for any promotions while we're running a deficit spending. So no promotions if we're going to pass the two dollars and thirty-one cents plus the four percent. I think that's reasonable and fair, and it keeps councils' fingers on the purse strings.
Mr. Feiner, as, I know this is, you're shotgunning on this a little bit. Can you offer a suggestion on where such, where such language would be added to the existing ordinance to, Mayor, we have, we have a motion on the table, and I'm getting the motion clarified. And then we will look for a second on the motion before there will be continued discussion. So my question is to Mr. Feiner about where such language would be added to the ordinance.
Well, number one, Grant, you've got a motion, you may have mentioned it, you've got a motion on the table right now to adopt this ordinance. And now we've got a motion within a motion.
Correct. And I'm trying to clarify the motion to amend so that we can then, I'm looking for clarification on the motion to amend.
Well, you've got a twenty-seven-page ordinance here. You're asking me to sit here and find a place to slide some words into. I don't know that I can sit here and do that right now and find a place to insert that.
Okay.
But my bear concern is that you've got a motion to adopt it and discussion, but within that discussion, there's been another motion. I don't know if addressing that, Ms. Frishy's motion is appropriate yet, depending on what happens with the motion to adopt. what happens with the motion to adopt.
So, we have, we have, Ms. Frishy, would you please restate your motion to amend for clarification? Thank you.
So, I didn't have anything written formally. I'm basically saying that there would be no promotional movements within the salary ordinance without council's approval while running a deficit spend on the budget. And once the deficit spending isn't happening, then that would, we could amend it, or we can, then it takes away the authority, and they're fine to do. But at that point, we're giving our employees the raise.
We are making a motion.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Is there a second of the motion? Mr. Walser. So, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. This is a motion to amend. Mr. Walser.
I think this is a good way for us just to, until we can get the budget discussion through, since we didn't want to change this the first time around, gives us the ability to at least hold promotions, especially when we're looking at the addition of another, additional step into this. And we know that a lot of this is based on moving people up one additional step for, to get them into a higher pay range. So, I think this is a good way to go about that, until we can get our budget under control and make sure that we're overspending taxpayer dollars.
Mayor Murn.
So, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So, I understand the position that council is in. Your responsibility is legislative action and appropriations. And so, we are coming forward with a proposal from the administration that has the authority over operations. Over the last seven-plus years, on an annual basis...
One second, please. Would somebody, whoever's phone is going off, please silence it or remove it from the chamber. Thank you.
So, related to the administration's operating budget, for the last seven-plus years, the administration has brought forward a deficit budget. So, now, you're saying that even though each year, we trust our departments and put them in a position to manage their budgets throughout the year, you want to penalize them by saying, even though the administration recognizes you've been doing good work and works with you on a daily basis, and recognizes that we are putting in a more efficient structure of employment to manage our taxpayer dollars wisely, because we think there's too much in the budget that you guys can't manage, we're going to say you can't make operational decisions and work with your employees to appropriately compensate them, because we've been doing our job for the last seven years to balance the budget, to work through operations, to management. And I understand that this is a larger-than-normal deficit, because we are making a significant pay increase. But our operations, and again, I know you guys understand this, but to the public, the operating budget, the general fund budget that we're talking today, is pretty much employees. Our capital budget, you know, the other 20% is looked at and managed separately. So, this operating budget is largely our personnel, and then the daily operational items that they need to support that. Insurance, trash removal, radios, cell phone, software, all of chemicals, all of these other nitty-gritty items that we manage throughout the year and have contracts and do. But now, we're arbitrarily saying, well, because we don't like the budget that has been put forward, we're going to take away operational responsibility from the administration whose under Ohio Revised Code responsibility has been given, because we just don't think, we don't trust you guys to follow through on your word this time.
Mr. Walser.
Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying, but nothing could be further from the truth in what I'm saying. Yes, you all have budgeted 8% and given back 8% for the last seven years, correct, Rob?
On average, but we don't know what, from which department.
Mayor.
On average, 8% has always come back to us. You've budgeted, but no point in time until this year have we ever shown a two-year deficit that puts us below our mandatory reserve. Never has that happened. So, now, if everything goes according to the way it is, budgeted today, we're going to dip into our budgeted reserve. So, we're going to have to figure out where that money comes from. We know that is a place we don't want to go. We have managed to spend down a huge amount of cash in a very short amount of time, and this is taking more of that cash and giving you the ability to spend it. All I'm saying through this whole process is give us, city council, the ability to go along with you and decide to make additional appropriations as the money comes in. Rob was making a very good point last meeting. We don't know. And what Mr. DeArment said, I believe that's where he was going with the discussion on revenue estimates, was we don't know. But as that money comes in and we have more of it, just come to council and ask for it and say, we need to spend this. Why would we not do that? This is not, this is nothing new.
As this discussion is winding away from the motion to amend, I will call the question and ask for...
No.
Call the question and ask for a vote on the motion to amend. Please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, those opposed, nay. Okay. Please state, please, please state your, the point of Robert's rules that we are doing incorrectly.
Under Robert's rules, a calling the question requires a vote to call the question.
Okay. I move to call the question. Second, Mr. Ballman. All those in favor?
Discussion on the motion to call.
Discussion on the motion to call the question. Ms. Frishy.
So, I did not get, I guess, rebut the mayor when, when she made the statement that council's inferring that we don't trust our employees and that we're trying to penalize them.
Point, point made, I'll, I'll...
Oh, wait, what?
Point made, I will remove, I will remove, I will remove the, withdraw the point, the call of the question with approval of Mr. Ballman of the second. Mr. Ballman, approve the removal of the call, okay? Discussion, Ms. Frishy.
So, to clarify, the mayor's rebuttal to the request to amend, this is simply just slowing things down when we are operating a deficit spend, as Councilman Walser explained in detail. I believe we're all on the same page for, but to say that we don't trust our employees and that we are trying to penalize them are harsh words that are not true. There's nowhere in here where we're saying, take the $2.31 out, and nowhere in here are we saying in this amendment that we're taking the 4% out. Simply saying the new salary column and the increases, that there are no promotional increases until you and the administration get your budget under control. If you can do that, great. In the middle of the year, three months into the year, we can have that discussion, and you can bring those options to us, and if the money is there, we would gladly spend it. But right now, you, you don't have that, and, and you feel that we're attacking you, and it's not an attack, it's finding a give and take. And typically, lastly, typically, when we have our salary ordinance, that goes to committee and we review that. And that has not happened in the past. It has happened in the past, because I can remember sitting in past years.
Mayor Murn.
So, I think the point that I want to emphasize is that, okay, across the, so, we said revenue for this year is probably going to end up 3% over the projection. The 3% over the projection. If we are able to turn back on average 8%, and now, and one thing that I would say, that's across all of the departments. Some years with one department, they don't turn in as much. Another may need a little bit more. That operational flexibility is what is important to keep things running. How often do you guys get annoyed because we have a last-minute something that we have to bring to you? The reason we don't have to come to you with a list of 10 emergency items every meeting is because you appropriate the funds necessary for our operations to manage and run the city. That is our responsibility. Now, if we are able to go through and bring the amounts down, it is, yes, the last couple of years, our revenues have been higher. We understand that. We're finding a new trend. That's great. The deficit spending, though, a projection, is a projection, but it's relatively arbitrary when you look at historical performance, because we, again, are managing it. So, I respect the auditor, he's being conservative in the position that he's putting forward and all of these things, but when you look back at the work that we've been doing and how we manage it, it is not necessarily the accurate picture of what I believe we will be able to achieve. And by putting in a statement that we can't make adjustments to our staff to align with the operations that we are charged with running, I think that that would be a disservice to the operation and to our team.
Ms. Frishy.
Nobody's saying that you can't manage your staff and that you're not going to get your operational budget with the $2.31 and the, and the 4% for your current staffing. We are simply saying promotional increases. And you already, and, and I know why you're fighting for it so hard, because it was discussed in budget that you have promotions already promised. Maybe it'll happen in three months, maybe it'll happen in six, or maybe it'll be a good thing that we waited this year, but we went ahead and said, thank you, City of Findlay employees, for coming to work and making Findlay the best place it can be. We're giving you your 231, and we're giving you the 4%. But unfortunately, right now, because we're operating in a deficit spend for 2025, it would be prudent for city council to just slow things down a little bit. So, we are not going to allow for promotional increases without council's approval. I think that's the best give and take we can give, because it's showing our responsibility of our job as well. It's not against you, it's just saying, we have a responsibility of the public, you have one, the auditor has one.
Mr. Stasiak.
I want to give everyone who's having this discussion a little bit of comfort. There's a couple of comments regarding the revenues, and I want to put them in perspective because they're, the way they've been made to this point don't properly reflect it. The numbers that are being used for the revenue projections for this year, they're saying are going to come in roughly 3% higher. Those are factored in to the summary sheets that I gave you. So, the balances that you're using assume that higher revenue. So, it's not that it's going to come in over and above. The numbers you are looking at are real, based on where those numbers are at today, and those revenue projections, which were updated literally days before the budget book was handed to you on December 3rd. So, they're pretty good numbers. Second thing is, when I project the revenues, I don't project them conservatively. Take the information that I have, and I try to project them as realistically, again, not optimistically, not pessimistically, not, not conservatively, just realistically, and I strive to do that. So, there you go.
Any other discussion on specifically the motion to, the motion to amend? Mr. Martin.
I just want to make a point about this salary ordinance. Majority of the changes are moving the ranges based on the, the changes of the wages. So, for instance, if somebody makes, the range for an employee is 25 to 30 bucks an hour, for a simple example, they make 27. You do the math on this, they're outside of their range with this new wage increase. So, more, majority of the changes that are worked diligently through the RHR department as well as one of the payroll individuals in the auditor's office, they move these ranges so they actually are compliant when we pay these people these wage increases to be compliant. Hang on. Can...
I'm talking to the president.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, thought you were going to interject. So, now, there are, to your point, there are a few changes that are promotional that we anticipate. Nothing's been promised. But with that, the reality of this is, our supervisor level, when we've created this org chart where we are actually creating these economies of scale of individuals at different supervisors sharing staffing, we had some discrepancies based on how these departments did their promotions. And I'm not questioning how they did their promotions, however, there was a discrepancy in how it was doing, happening. Therefore, we analyzed that and said, we need to level the playing field for these supervisors who all in their right departments do amazing work. But due to that sharing of individuals and the sharing of work, we felt this is the opportunity that those supervisors are all leveled up. So, those are some of the larger discrepancies. But those are it. So, I just, you're, you're focusing on a few little things, but at the end of the day, this is, these are some operational adjustments with these staffing changes that we felt necessary to be, be, create equity across the table.
Mr. Walser.
Rob, I appreciate that explanation. Very good. But we did add an additional step into the ordinance, correct? So, you, you added on a level that wasn't there previously. So, could you talk about that?
If they didn't exist, so, and I guess, this is more of an HR thing, that they, they focus in the codes in the 190s and the 200s and whatnot. To create that equity and establish that line across the supervisors, they had to create an additional level above the existing ranges versus adjusting. But a few of them, we actually decided instead of bumping up, we actually kept and brought the other ones to them.
So, in that, in that situation, so essentially, a guy is topped out at his level, right, at whatever dollar value? And you're saying that the additional 231 puts them above that? Understood. So, instead of just having them at 101% of their range, you're saying, we're going to add a range?
We adjusted the existing ranges to accommodate the wage increases.
But you also added a range. So, that guy...
Not across the board. There were specific areas that that was done to.
We did in some places, Mayor.
Just for those areas.
So, what we did then is give them that range, so they're not going to be at the top of that next range. So, you're giving them the ability to even, to go even higher, right?
That ends up...
Because they have more room in their range, where otherwise, had they been at 103%, they would have been topped out.
Of course, there's always that, if you move things, there's always that range that you move within.
So, the question would be, and I appreciate that explanation, but the question is then, are we, are we overpaying for a job? Right? Because now, you've taken ranges, you've adjusted them up for COLA, got it, makes sense. But now, you're adding a range that would go above and beyond where we had been historically.
I would argue, once we did the market adjustment, or market assessment, our ranges actually lagged the market. So, we are not only, again, the salary ordinance has to reflect what we are actually compensating our individuals. So, with that, we had to adjust the, the salary ordinance to align with the market adjustments that we created based on the market analysis that we did.
Understood. So, why wouldn't we just adjust the ranges, the current set of ranges, to meet that, what you just said, to meet the market, versus adding an additional top range that gives people the ability to go even higher? I'm, I'm just trying to understand that better.
Well, if I...
Rob, are you, are you responding to that? Well, we've got a lineup in front of the mayor, so...
Point to that specific...
Rob has the floor.
I'll defer to the mayor. She has the point to make.
Mayor, Ms. Frishy, you were, you were next.
So, my question, I guess, following up to that, you know, looking, him breaking it down and trying to get an answer out of you on that part, you know, we went from 9180 to 9190 for water maintenance, sewer maintenance, and on the base level, it was $30.50, went to 3180, but yet, Public Works is 3318, and a foreman position is 34. I mean, I know there was a discussion of budget that, A, we were trying this new method, but it sounds like we're putting it in concrete, and the other discussion was similar pay grades to back, to offset with chargebacks. But they're really not completely the same across the board. So, I'll just ask the question, Rob. We went through the fire and police union contracts, and clearly, the percentage of raises were not as simple as you made it sound. Some of the raises are quite high, depending on the level of seniority positions and stipends and so forth. Looking at your, your proposed increase, the salary ordinance, with, you know, making certain employees overtime eligible and, and adding in some stipends and taking out some things, what is the average pay increase percentage per employee with following the, we're following pretty much the union contract? what is the average pay increase percentage per employee with following the, we're following pretty much the union contract? So are we talking 15, 20, 25% pay increases for certain people, especially since we're adding in that next pay level?
Other questions for Rob?
Mr. Stasiak.
What can Rob answer to the question?
Because Mr. Stasiak is the next one to go. He's been raising his hand for about five minutes.
We'll all remember that question. It's a good question. Um, I want to put this in perspective, and Mr. Wolpser, your, your question is perfect, and this goes directly to the point. And this is from, uh, the compensation plan analysis. A salary survey was done, not a salary study. You need to know the difference, and here are two sentences out of the salary study done December 2002 for the City of Findlay. First, the city has not engaged in an analysis and a systemic update of the compensation plan for nearly 20 years. Still true today. Compensation system should be reviewed every three to five years. During this time, several aspects of the system were tinkered with until nearly all semblance of equity and/or mathematical integrity were lost. Second, several of the city's position descriptions are older, and so they no longer adequately reflect the level in which the city has chosen to compensate the position. As such, the, Findlay's internal structure, the relationship between one position and another, appears to have been compromised. And this is the argument we have made out of the auditor's office with regard to a salary study that council engaged in years ago in this very similar situation. And that should help you in understanding, as I have, uh, shared with you year after year after year, when we've prevented this, presented this document, you have a role, and, and this illustrates it very well, I believe.
Mayor Mern.
All right. So back to what I was going to say to Councilman Wolpser. Um, one of the reasons that it doesn't make sense to just shift the new sections up is also for replacement of positions, right? So if you're bringing somebody in, in, right now, our department heads that are going into these positions are pretty consistent with their years of experience. You've had some modifications. You may end up in a couple of years promoting somebody into it that you wouldn't immediately take up to that full same pay. But you do need to have a wider range with, with these structures. Again, they gave us the flexibility to determine what is appropriate for individual employees. Um, to Auditor Stasiak's comments about the study, survey, et cetera, you are correct. We have, did not engage an outside firm to complete a full extensive study. However, the document he's referencing is from 2002. We did establish a human resources department, which we did not previously have, which has meticulously gone through the process of establishing job descriptions, pay equity, looking for opportunities to create, um, consistency in our, our process promotions, having criteria, different things like that, so that we have found a lot more consistency across our department heads' positions throughout the entire organization. The study that we completed is through our human resources director. He had access, and obviously Don's not with us now, but acting director, um, still has that accessibility to reach out to human resource departments where they say, "Hey, I'm looking for this information. Can you complete this survey and provide it?" It's all publicly accessible information as public entities, but they completed it and provided the information. We received information back from 10 different communities, and we had been able to compare how we performed against those. We were able to dwindle down to a couple of more key ones that we felt were in alignment. And as I previously shared, for example, with Tiffin and Lima, we were $3 on average, uh, on the low end away from them and up to $8 away on average. So some of our positions were even larger than that. So again, I, I think trying to get back to the motion on the floor so we can move on with life is, I understand what you guys are trying to achieve. However, again, those are operational decisions. We need to be able to make decisions to compensate employees, when, especially when they are performing work of a peer, and we are saying, "Well, now you're not going to get it." Now, if we give them a promotion of, of, that exceeds an 8% increase in a single year, we do have to come back to council to get approval through that. And so if somebody was beyond that, okay, evidently I'm wrong. So, but if, if we were, we're looking to give people beyond significant amounts, we, we would be working through that. And again, I'll just address, and Rob can tell me if I'm wrong. When we look at the budget across the board, the entire increase in personnel expense is a 12% increase. On average, it is much less than that per employee. There are some, you are compounding additions to get to a 25% increase. That is assuming that a police officer with seniority provides, uh, has additional credentials, is serving in a specialty service unit, and is doing all of these other requirements. If they are no longer serving in that capacity, they do not receive that benefit and should not be negatively hindered in their salary because they took on additional responsibilities.
We have a motion to amend the ordinance on the table. It has been seconded and discussed. All those in favor of amending the ordinance in the, with, uh, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer?
Nay.
Mr. Russell?
Nay.
Ms. Warnicki?
Nay.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Nay.
Mr. DiArment?
Nay.
Ms. Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Grino?
Nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Nay.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Nay.
The motion to amend fails. Now we have the, uh, uh, resolution as amended, uh, on the table with a, uh, motion and a second to approve. Continued discussion on the, uh, on the, uh, ordinance 2024-134 as amended. Ms. Frishy?
I will vote nay on this because council did not do their due diligence for the public. It's not against, um, our city employees. It is, um, for me, a matter of doing our job, and unfortunately, um, council does not want to do that. So I will be a nay, but only for that reason.
Other comments, discussion? All those in favor of ordinance 2024-134 as amended, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Mr. DiArment?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Grino?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Did I already ask Mr. Palmer? I'm sorry. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Kind of lost track. Sorry.
The motion, the ordinance is adopted.
Sorry, I got a little lost in that one. Third reading for ordinance 2024-137. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Hancock County, to be public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local School District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to a high revised code sections 5709.40B, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.832, and 5709.85, here and after referred to as the Sheets TIF.
Mr. Hellman?
Move for approval of ordinance 2024-137.
Second, Mr. Wolf, Wolp, Wolpser.
Ooh. It's contagious.
Discussion. Mr. DiArment?
So each of these are a little different. So on this one, uh, we've already spent this money, and now this is just a, we're using this district, this TIF to, um, to get it back, I guess. And so just looking at the numbers, um, it looks like we break even about 20 years into this. After 10 years, we're collecting that-
Got you.
$266,000, and then we still have, but, I mean, it kind of goes, it's roughly 20 years is when we, but just trying to throw that out there.
Mr. Stasiak?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wolpser and I participated in a lengthy conversation with, uh, the attorneys of Bricker. We do not know if we are going to be able to recapture the original investment that we've made. We don't know that for a couple of reasons. One is because we hadn't, the, the concept of TIF hadn't been brought to us by our municipal advisor until we got into some more conversations about economic development. And two, because of that, the appropriations legislation that was used for developing the property where Sheets is going to locate from the city side may or may not contain the appropriate language. So that money is spent. We will prepare a recapture document, present it to Bricker. They'll take a look at it, and if we can, it will come to council so I can move those funds in to recapture what we spent. However, if that does not happen, the money collected from the TIF will go into a TIF fund for future improvements related to the TIF area. In other words, they have to specifically benefit under the ORC Ohio law, that area. But I just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding. We don't know for sure if we can get the money back or not.
And I would-
Mayor Mern?
And I would just add the, though it lists specific items that qualify as public improvements, it doesn't have to be just that individual parcel that it can be used on. It can be in the area surrounding it. So it could be other roadway improvements, waterway improvements, drainage improvements, anything that is a, a proper public purpose that would benefit the development of that. It could be for anything, really, that, again, outlined in that document, but it wouldn't just be on that person.
Other comments or questions? Seeing as though there are none, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2024-137, please say, hasn't that been amended?
No.
No? Uh, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Mr. DiArment?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Grino?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
And Mr. Russell?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2024-138 as amended. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific property infrastructure improvements that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equiv- equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local Schools District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to a high revised code sections 5709.40B, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.832, and 5709.85, here and after referred to as the Findlay Machine and Tool TIF.
Ms. Warnicki?
Make a move to approve ordinance number 2024-138.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Discussion. Mr. Hellman? Mr. DiArment? Oh, my.
Um, so Jeremy, can you clarify on this one, uh, that FMT is paying to bring water to their building, right? And then, so this 150 grand goes beyond that initial property to loop it in for future development. Is that correct?
Yeah. So that water line is set up for future loops within that system. Um, because, you know, with, with the properties that you got to the east and stuff right there, that's a 20 or 24-inch water line that's running along 236. So yeah, we set those up so that way those systems can be looped, keep that constant flow through there.
Okay. So this one, we would get a return in about seven years?
Other questions? Mayor Mern?
I would just clarify, that is based off of only the return that is, uh, with known investment. So that would benefit other properties in the TIF district, and if additional development occurred there, the rate of return would increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance 2024-138 as amended, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Mr. DiArment?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Grino?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
And Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2024-139 as amended. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that, once made, that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authori- authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local School District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to a high revised code sections 5709.40B, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.832, and 5709.85, here and after referred to as the 99.75 TIF.
Mr. Wolpser?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Discussion. Mr. DiArment?
So on this one, um, I got a couple of questions. So is this, uh, low-income housing or is this market rate?
Market rate.
Market rate. Thank you. Okay. Uh, and a citizen suggested this would be a great place to do like a gateway entrance with a boulevard, and was that even considered, or is that, um, price prohibitive, cost prohibitive?
Yes, that's incorporated as part of it. So coming down off of 99, we have a boulevard as part of it.
Okay, very good. Um, so this one looks like it's about a nine years to break even based on, how far along is this? Do we, is this, um, I mean, do we anticipate this to come to us this year?
Um, the Casto development has already been approved through City Planning Commission. They are, um, pretty much in the engineering phases, kind of final. Um, one of their requests for the, the roadway kind of is their last item to, um, be able to move forward. They have been discussing with me, um, some other concerns about trying to, to get their project to pencil out, but really the TIF being established with the roadway is the last kind of thing for them to move forward with the options on their property, et cetera. Um, and again, I would just point out, when you're talking about the rate of return, that is specifically only based off of the Casto development, not all of the other properties in that area that I believe there would be additional, uh, development in the near future, given the roadway and water line accessibility following the, our investment.
Mr. Stasiak?
I appreciate your question, Mr. DiArment, and, uh, this is the one TIF I have great concern about because, much like some of the other ones, there is a lot, there's a private benefit here. Um, and basically, are, is, will this be a proper investment of our fund? And I think that should have been explored deeper with council as a whole, as to whether, uh, the look here fits what we're really trying to do. If it does, to make sure it doesn't set an improper precedent. Those were my only thoughts.
Ms. Frishy?
Where this property sits, I just need clarification. Um, is it all city or is part of it in the township? Was that part of the parcel that got split forever?
It's in the city.
So the 100% of it is?
Correct.
Mr. DiArment?
So this is, uh, a substantial investment. It's a million 320. So where would this money come from?
Uh, that would be up for discussion, um, on how we want to, uh, include it. Um, one note I wanted to make is that we've been in discussion with a, a number of the property owners, all the property owners that would be in the TIF district. One of the aspects of establishing a TIF that we are able to implement is negotiating individual, um, development agreements with investors to help offset payments. So for example, with Casto, they recognize that there's upfront expense with us that we would be taking kind of risk on if they didn't move forward, and so they have offered to put a development agreement in place. And I do believe that that was listed in the document of about $140,000 annually for 10 years to help cover the cost. It's really just that upfront, um, investment that they need, and the other surrounding property owners have also been, um, interested in, in a similar deal, recognizing the upfront investment that we would be making with taxpayer dollars and, and needing to cover that.
Mr. Stasiak?
Yeah, I also want to share, based on those comments, that I was in an initial meeting, in an initial conference call, dealing with some of those items. But none of the follow-up information was provided to me by the developer or, uh, or some of the groups. Some of the information was, but not, not to the detailed level that I would have hoped to have seen prior to this legislation being passed. But again, we need to, the, TIFs are a good thing generally, but I think, uh, it would be wise for council to consider their process for how you decide whether it's a good thing or not, and I don't think you've had a committee look at this, have you? And you should. It should, you know, other than strategic planning generally, they haven't seen the fine details of where you're at of what the final proposal is. Uh, and if they have, I must have missed that meeting, but I don't think it happened. So I would hope council does their due diligence on this as well.
Mr. DiArment?
May, maybe we're getting the cart before the horse. I mean, I think we're just approving the TIF, and then the business deal will come to us later when we actually spend the money, and we'll go through pro formas, and is that correct?
A little bit of both, yeah. So no money can be expended from, I'm sorry, I went. Um, no money can be expended from the fund without an approval from council. So no money would be approved there. So yes, this is a little bit of a chicken and egg situation, because one of the things that is hindering development on these properties is this road, because it benefits so many properties. It's on one property, but this developer with the property to the west is the one that's ready to go, and so to be able to have that accessibility that we want, that's why we need to move forward, but no additional appropriation. All the information in this, pretty much all the information in this pretty document, except for some of the commentary, which is all publicly accessible information, is exactly what was shared with you guys at the meeting at the strategic plan. I added a couple of additional renderings, because a number of council members were asking about the Casto development, but that was all public information from when they went to Planning Commission a couple of months ago, with some very minor modifications.
Ms. Frishy?
I guess I just want to put out there, you know, typically when a TIF gets done, we're doing an investment, you can say it's not for the developer. I'm a little confused why the auditor has a bigger problem with this project than the first two, but usually when you do a development, economic development is communicating with us, and we are working as a community with our strategic plan or whatever's going on to say, this is what we want to bring into our community, and we want white-collar jobs, we want high-paying jobs, and we, you develop a development like that, and that's where the TIF comes into play, and you recapture those funds when we recruit those types of businesses. So for the auditor to question this current TIF for me, I think there's more opportunity there, that that could be a good business park, it could be a lot of things. Now, the question is, do we want to put housing in there? Is that what, the type of housing we want to recruit, and that's what we want to support? But there's opportunity, the hospital's out that way, there's a lot out there that we can be recouping and have, hopefully, knock on wood, high-paying job development park. So that one makes more sense than sheets for a one parcel that we already got a bunch of state money from. The project for FMT, it was a little iffy there, but there's opportunity for business development to go out there if we can get economic development to communicate with city council and the public of bringing in what we want to recruit. Otherwise, we're putting in TIFs for more low-paying jobs.
Mr. Stajak.
I appreciate that perspective, and I guess for more clarification from my point of view, I can't tell from the information that's been provided to me if we're paying for basically a parking lot or a road for part of this. In other words, in the initial presentation to me, when you drive through an apartment complex, you're on a road, but it's essentially a parking lot access, and that hasn't been clarified to me. Are we building their parking lot, you know, the roadway in their parking lot, or are we building roads? And if that's to be clarified later, that's great, but that will be the one thing. I'll stand against anything that has investment in personal or private development. I think we need to be very cautious.
Ms. Frishy?
And just to clarify, if we pass the 9975 TIF, we're not committing ourselves to putting that infrastructure in yet, correct?
Correct.
It's just setting it up.
Correct.
We can still say no to it, and I would agree with the auditor on those statements. I think we're on the same page.
Mayor?
And if I may, just add a couple of points across all of the TIFs as a reminder. Once you establish a TIF, you cannot extend the life of it, but you can make it shorter. So if in, you know, 20 years, 10 years, we decide that you no longer want to have it, you can remove it. You also can add additional properties. So if some of the neighboring properties come to us and say that they want to be a part of the TIF, that is an option. You are correct, when you establish the TIF, it is not committing us to any of the infrastructure investments. Again, that would be a separate appropriation, and at that time is also when we would negotiate a development agreement. And as you can see, and I apologize, there's not page numbers, but on the page four, TIF District 9975, where it shows the roadway, you can clearly show it's a roadway, and if you look at the map of the development, you can see where it connects in to the overall projects. It's on the north side of their project. One of the things that they had discussed about was with their infrastructure, all of the infrastructure within their parcel is private. They did not want those to be public roadways that we would construct, because it would have changed the right-of-way easement requirements that would have been required. It would have then changed some of the configurations that they had, and they would have had to lose some of their buildings. So they decided not to do that. So we are not doing infrastructure work on the private property. It will be a public roadway that will be on a different property owner's property that they have dedicated for this purpose to help incentivize development on their property as well.
Ms. Frishy?
And for clarification for me, in order to expand these TIFs, any of them, they have to be annexed into the city, or no?
Yes, they have to be annexed.
So I know you're having some issues with the commissioners and annexation, and them wanting to maintain their township, so how is that limiting us?
Well, obviously, any properties that aren't annexed in wouldn't be able to be a part of the TIF. I had a productive meeting this afternoon with a county commissioner and a township trustee to discuss some of the issues that we've been experiencing. I think the biggest thing that I continue to reiterate is, you know, if a private property owner requests to annex into the city, that, in my opinion, should be, you know, have a heavier weight with the county commissioners and township trustees, because it's an individual property owner wanting to do things with their property. So I think we're making progress on some of those concerns, but obviously, each parcel is going to be a little bit different in how it is addressed, and each TIF would be addressed separately as well.
All those in favor of adoption of this ordinance, please say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Mr. DiArment?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser?
Aye. Aye.
The ord-
Did I forget something?
I'm sorry, aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
I don't want to miss that vote.
Third reading for ordinance 2024-140 as amended. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Findlay City School Local Board, Findlay City Local School District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.40B, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.832, and 5709.85. Here and after referred to as the Downtown North River TIF.
We do have public communications on this item. Richard Kirk has asked to speak, and as, Richard, as you make your way up to the microphone, I'm going to preface his comments by saying, he and I had a conversation about where in the agenda he should, he should be. He asked, his specific topic was talking about the city park, but when we talked a little bit about what he wanted to talk about, there were some comments about TIF in his, in his comments, and so I thought it was appropriate to have it prior to this, the third reading on this amendment. Mr. Kirk, you have four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Richard Kirk, longtime community member and local business owner. I think the downtown park is a very ambitious, neat plan, with some spectacular features. But is now the time for this improvement? Do we have other needs as a community? There's a lot of discussion about TIFs. What about spending some money on housing? As a business owner, some of the biggest problems we have are hiring people and keeping them in the area. And yes, I realize a park could be nice, but a single-family housing, that's the best thing to bring young people in, and to keep them in the community. Right now, infrastructure, roads, water lines, sewer lines, are very expensive for developers to finance, and private developers need that payment in 10 years. As a community, we can spread that out over 50 years, and maybe we can get more housing in our community, and we can grow, and as we all know, that housing will keep returning in revenue and property tax over a long period of time. So I like the park plan, I'm questioning whether now is the time. In addition, there's a lot of communities around the country, and some local in the state, that are combining parks like this with CSO improvements. We've done a substantial amount of work on CSO pump stations in the state. We haven't done one with a park, but a lot of communities are doing it. Have we investigated that? The substantial amount of overflow this community puts in the Blanchard River during a rain event that ends up in the Great Lakes, EPA is not going to allow that to happen for very long. They're going to stop it. We may not have a say when that starts happening. Why don't we get ahead of it and incorporate the park with the CSO pump station? You'd be amazed at what some communities have done when they combine those two public infrastructure ideas. And, you know, I think both are needed, but if we can incorporate them into one, we'd be killing two birds with one stone. The two engineers that you have working on this, Arcades with the combined sewers, the overflow issue, that they worked on it in the past, I don't know if they're currently working on it, and Strand, StanTech, working on the flood mitigation and park, they both work on parks and pump stations, combine those ideas throughout the country. So, you know, why don't we ask them to submit qualifications and see what that would cost? 15, 20 years ago, there was a plan for moving this park west a little bit, west of Main Street. Would that be a good place to incorporate, incorporate the park into a CSO pump station? So I like the plan, I think it's a great idea. Is now the time, and should we be spending our money on something else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk, questions? Mr. Wobser?
Mr. Kirk, you talked about housing at the very beginning of your comments. Are you suggesting that we do a TIF area for housing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to take 40 acres that could be expanded to 80 acres and do some TIF financing, and if you spread that infrastructure cost out, I'm not saying of doing it for free, but just spread it out longer than a private developer could do. Just think how cost per year that would be helpful to a developer and a new family coming to town.
I know that in our discussions with Bricker, Mr. Auditor, you'll remember the comments that were made about TIFs and housing, some cities got really carried away with housing TIFs, and they have been used in the past and can be used if they're, I guess, I want to say sparingly, but strategically would be a good word for that. So I appreciate those comments. And then the CSO improvements, I guess I'm trying to understand what that looks like. You're talking about a pumping station and a park. How do those two things go together? I do not understand that at all.
Sure, I'm sorry. So during a rain event, the combined sewers in Findlay will overflow or bypass right to the river, a significant amount of water. So what, in the last 30-plus years, the EPA and engineering firms have been doing is, you put a pump station there at those interceptors, those sewers, those manholes, and you pump during that rain event to a holding lagoon. And then, when that rain event's over with, you size the holding lagoon to handle so much water, when that rain event's over with, and there's no bypassing, that water then flows back into the pump station, excuse me, flows back into the wastewater plant to be processed. A wastewater plant, you know, could, let's say, handle 15 million gallons a day, during a rain event, it might see 50 million gallons a day. Well, instead of putting it to the river, you hold it in a lagoon. So that's why I talked about a pump station. Instead of going into community and separating the storm from the sewers, the sanitary sewers, which is very costly, what design engineers have done is they've put a pump station at these interceptors. The end result is the same.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes, just to kind of go on the combined sewer overflow, the city is in the process, Jeremy, please correct me if I'm wrong, of having work looked at for different plans, as you mentioned. We have been constantly looking for CSO overflows, we've been doing some small, easy stuff to reach down off the trees type stuff, but that's, that could be one of the things that they bring forward to us, is a retention basin somewhere that would include a pump station for overflows and stuff. So that is being looked at, and it is mandated by the EPA already. So it's, it's something that the city is actively working with now, starting to get the plannings at least.
Good, I'm glad to hear all that. And so what I'm asking is, have that consultant propose to you combining city parks with those CSO pump stations?
And they may be. We haven't got that back yet from them, so we don't even know what ideas they have yet to bring back to us.
It's some amazing, beautiful ideas I've seen over the last 20 years that I'm like, wow, you know, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, but just so you know, the city is actively looking into those CSO overflows, because eventually, as you mentioned, eventually you're not going to be able to have any overflows.
Jeremy of the mayor, add in on that.
Okay, I'll hit on a couple of things, and then Jeremy can give a little bit more detail. Thank you for coming in and chatting. A couple of quick items, one, Strand, as you mentioned, they work in a lot of this area. That was something that we discussed at one point, but given this area flood mitigation benefits and areas, there wasn't really a good area to have the lagoon, because it is meant to flood, and so that would cause additional issue. But we'll revisit that with them and make sure, and I know Jeremy's been working with additional consultants to look at other creative opportunities to help mitigate costs, but then also do some kind of more forward-thinking investments. I'll let him add more on that in a minute, but I just wanted to hit on some of the other items. We certainly, so the TIF benefit to these areas, flood mitigation is moving forward, we all want it to move forward, we got to get that done, that is the top priority. By doing the TIF on the properties surrounding the area, recognizing that these properties are going to then have more potential, because they'll have a lower risk of flooding, that then provides us some revenue to invest in infrastructure in that area. It also, because it is a broad benefit, it could be used for fun, for downtown benefit, it can be used for a park investment, which then also has a ripple effect of attracting additional housing development into our already-established neighborhoods, and as we all know, infill development is less expensive, because the infrastructure is already there. So one of the things that I haven't discussed with council yet, but is on my radar for next year, is looking at modifying our CRA to make it more of an opportunity zone kind of focused structure, where we could look at some of our residential neighborhoods and put together incentives that are more focused on residential development in some of those areas, and then identify another area that may be more conducive to commercial or industrial, and put in a more targeted incentive package for that, where we are able to help with some of the residential development. The TIFs that have to be put in place are a different type of TIF that are more restrictive, and so none of the ones that we're putting in place here are geared specifically towards residential, and I wanted to note for council, as I had communicated previously, even though residential properties in TIF District 4, the Downtown Recreation Area TIF, are highlighted in red, they are not impacted by this, because the way that it is only focused on commercial properties that are under the taxation, so the residential properties are not included, and that is updated on your amended version, those parcels have been removed. So that is certainly something on our radar, and something we heard loud and clear in the strategic plan was, obviously, housing, community aesthetics, investment. The other thing on the park is that we're still three years out from being able to do anything with that, and so it is really still that planning and teeing it up, and one of the things that we'll also look at is how should it be phased? Are there things that we want to wait on? And that's why we're still working through getting the cost breakdown of the different elements, because we're not going to be able just to let it sit there and be wasteland, that's not what- That's not what any of us want as a feature of our downtown. So, there's gonna be different levels of investment that are brought forward, and council may choose to just do that very basic investment versus some of the more expensive differentiating features that have also been thrown up as potential investments as well. So, I think you're hitting on all the same things that we're thinking of. I appreciate the feedback on looking for more creative ways to do TIF or incentives around single-family residential. That is definitely on my radar for next year as well. I love apartments and the investment that they're, condos that they're bringing, especially the ones that we're seeing right now. But we do need more single-family residential to accommodate bringing in more of our workforce to live in our community as well. But that is a more challenging incentive to put together. And so, that's something that we're gathering information from some experts on how we may be able to do that effectively.
So, thank you for that, Mayor. Being a business owner, there's nothing more important right now than trying to hire some good quality people, and we're working extremely hard at that. And most of those people talk about housing. We have beautiful parks already. Most of those people talk about housing. As far as the CSO, I don't know if the terminology got confused, but for a design engineer to tell you they can't put a lagoon in an area of flood, we build a lagoon in Marietta, Ohio, at the confluence of Muskingham, Ohio River, with a CSO pump station. So, I don't, I don't know what they were talking about, obviously, but I can tell you it's possible. I can also tell you it's possible that the area where the old wastewater plant is, that's got a dike all the way around it. And that doesn't flood lists as a significant event. So, you know, there's an area, there's several areas like that in the community that aren't being used for its potential, that could be used. So, I don't buy that a consulting engineer said it wasn't possible.
Yeah, and they said it was possible, they just said it was not a great location with a vision for what we're wanting to do. We are looking at other, I don't think any of us, personally, I would not be in favor of having a sewer lagoon in our downtown. That doesn't seem like the ideal spot. I agree, there are other areas that we are looking at, and I'll kick it to Jeremy if he still wants to add anything, because we are looking at how do we get more creative in having better wastewater and water infrastructure throughout the community.
You really hurt my feelings when you said a sewer in downtown.
Mr. Calb, anything to add on our?
So, I'll go real quick, so don't keep going on CSO when we're talking about downtown. But yeah, I agree with, you know, the CSO, we're doing a long-term control plan amendment as part of that Strand was our, is our current designer that is working on that amendment. One of the reasons why we chose that firm is because of their green infrastructure background that they had, as what you were talking about. One of the areas that we are looking at, the pump station and the holding tanks and stuff like that, as we're going through the alternatives, was actually on the west side of Corey Street, where the Phase One benching was, just because that's where a lot of our current outflows are right now. So, without repiping all that stuff, because the one at Front Street that was there, we were actually able to close that a number of years ago. So, I agree with what you're saying with the holding tanks and stuff, but as we're going through that plan, we're doing the amendment because the first one we came out, we didn't feel confident in it. Without spending money, we'll make sure that what we're doing is actually gonna be something that is gonna be worthwhile. But with the ideas you're coming, that, I agree. The green infrastructure and stuff, we have areas that you identified that can be used. How do we use them so that way they're not just mowed grass areas? How do we utilize them as a CSO area to keep it safe as another area as well? So, I agree with that. You'll be seeing a lot more coming through, you'll see some stuff going through water and sewer, because by the end of, well, I guess December of '25 is kind of when our final drafts will be going to the EPA for their approval and stuff. So, don't want to, if you have any questions on it, I'd, you know, I'd love to talk to you about it. Because, like I said, you do have some insight, you guys do do that work to see how that, but, you know, there is, there is that, those conversations that we are having with Strand.
In some of these communities, Mayor, you wouldn't know it was sanitary sewer or bypassing in those areas. So, don't let that cloud your thinking. You hurt his feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you very much, have a great holidays.
We have, the ordinance has been read, it is in search of a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve ordinance number 2024-140 as amended.
Second, Mr. Baumann, congratulations, Mr. Palmer, on knowing what ordinance we were on. Discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2024-140 as amended, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2024-141. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Finley, Ohio to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Hancock County Commissioners, as well as the Mommy Watershed Conservancy District for continued flood mitigation improvements in and near the city of Finley, appropriating funds there too, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve ordinance number 2024-141.
Second, Mr. Diarmant. Discussion. Ms. Frishy.
This is the two million move, is that, I haven't looked at that ordinance, can you?
Yes, I believe it's 2.2, but yes, that is the amount.
And we have to do that right now, and if we don't do it before the end of the year, until you have a chance to look at your budget? Is it, do we have to get it passed tonight, is my question for you, Mayor?
Yes, it should be passed this evening so that we can continue to work with the county commissioners to get the Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge out to bid and under construction as soon as possible.
And Norfolk Southern is not putting any money in, or do you know how much?
Not at this point in time.
Other discussion, Mr. Stajak.
I just want to make it clear that this is just a transfer from general fund to the flood mitigation account. There's no associated expenditure.
Other discussion. All those in favor of ordinance 2024-141, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2024-142. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Finley, Ohio to advertise for bids where required and enter into contracts for construction of various projects in accordance with the 2024 department equipment list, appropriating and transferring funds for said capital expenditures, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2024-142.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion, Ms. Frishy.
Jeremy, all of, so the capital improvement, one hundred and sixty thousand for South Main Street, Front Street intersection, I know we started that this year, so this is gonna complete it before the end of the year, along with the Greenway Trail Phase Three. I'm just gonna kind of go through these three bullets that you emailed, so if you want to just do it, that's fine.
Yep, so, South Main Street, Front Street, that will be, to finish out the intersection of that, we ordered, we ordered the materials that have long lead times in the beginning. Wait until we start getting a schedule for that, and then we appropriate the rest of the funds. The Greenway Trail, this will be finishing out the final design of that. We had to do some redesign with some poles, with, working with homeowners on rightaways and temporary rightaways that are needed. We had to do some redesign work on that. There's some additional funds thrown in there for contingency, water fund. Those two projects right there, North Main Water Line, East Street Water Line, those are funds going towards either startup, so that way either our water shop can complete the work or survey and design work and all that kind of stuff. So, pretty much that is startup money, so that way we can keep that project, those projects rolling. And same way with sewer fund, those are gonna be startup funds, so that way we can get surveyed, designed, get those ready to go, so we can get them out to bid in '25.
So, they haven't started, these are projects for '25 that were just seeded.
They, they, they were scheduled for '24, but with the workload and stuff, and how much work was already out there, it, we didn't want to receive a higher price because, you know, everyone else was kind of busy at the time. So, we're gonna save them until spring, so that way we can bid them out in '25.
Other discussion. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2024-142, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance 2024-143. This had the replacement attachment, or exhibit. An ordinance enacting regulations on unhoused camps and public sleeping, and declaring an emergency. Second reading for ordinance 2024-146. An ordinance amending Chapter 767 of the codified ordinances of the city of Finley, and declaring an emergency.
We have public comment on this ordinance. John Prokowsky from Ward Four.
And John, did you, oh, John with the Cleveland ad. You're up. Thanks for hanging out with us this long, appreciate it.
Hello, my name's John Prokowsky. Been in Finley since 2008. I'm a small business owner, specifically owner of a food truck. I was kind of giving a heads up about the revised code. Just getting a lot of questions, I think people seen some newspaper articles around, some emails. And a lot of people are coming to me, just as a fellow food truck owner. And we're looking at this, the revised code, and just, just maybe wanting a little more clarification with some of the wording, what's applicable to us as small business owners, as like a food truck owner versus a, you know, someone that goes door to door as a peddler or something like that. Feel like we've been bundled into this, this, this group where I don't think it really, we are really that type of a business. So, really wanting some more clarification on what's required from us to get a license so that we know and we have confidence that we're being a good standing business. We like to partner with other businesses in town, and another way for us to be reliable and make sure we're doing the right thing, we just want to make sure, like, is a, you know, the background check's still necessary? You know, I travel about an hour radius from Finley, talk to a lot of food truck operators in around the area, and a lot of their hesitation to come to Finley to bring more money into Finley is the, kind of the uncertainty of what is required of them. I think some of their visions are smarts, they make sense. Others is like, well, you hand this to somebody that's not familiar with the language, they're like, well, this part makes sense, but what doesn't? And so, I like the idea of, I don't mind the fee, paying the fee to the city, the department, makes us, you know, makes, puts some onus on us to, you know, if we're visiting a new city or if someone's visiting Finley, that they're gonna pay the taxes of the sales that they're coming to the city. What's a little confusing is, you know, some language around coming downtown Finley. For instance, I deal with a lot of areas downtown, I partner with some breweries downtown, where like, I don't know if I'm able to go to those breweries next year with this language. Or is we have to get a special permit every time I'm going to one of these locations? We also partner with a lot of like, we partner with the culinary program, have mill stream. We're trying to give students opportunity of what it's like to run a business. And like, I don't know if that opportunity will still be available to me next year if, you know, I'm having trouble reading if these are legitimate or not. The other thing I just wanted to ask, sorry for asking all these questions quickly, but I know I have four minutes of time. There are things like, you know, if we have a festival, this language doesn't say if we're allowed to be at a festival anymore, which is very concerning. Like, I have dates marked on my calendar throughout the whole entire year, like, well, can I accept this job, or should I start looking somewhere else? Should I go to Toledo instead of staying home? And that's what kind of makes me nervous, because, you know, we have a lot of cool opportunities on weekends, we're bringing people into town, food trucks are an option because, you know, there's a lot of people coming to town, the overflow at, or wait time at a brick and mortar, maybe an hour, hour and a half. I'm not saying we're gonna take away everyone's business, because people that want to go downtown and eat, they're gonna go and sit down to eat. But someone may come like, hey, I want a snack, and they come to a food truck. And then, I have some other language, but I think it's kind of a good start.
John, I'm gonna ask Rob to address some of the questions and some of the things you've, you've mentioned. I've also heard, and wanted to start with Rob with some explanation.
So, thank you for your comments, and it actually aligns with a lot of other feedback that we've gotten in the last week or so since we put this out there. So, appreciate, number one, your business to our community, as well as your interest in clarifying this. So, your confusion is actually one of the reasons we actually started this process, because food trucks are fairly new, a newer industry that's really growing in the last few years for obvious reasons, but you previously fell under peddlers and solicitors, and it didn't fit. And so, we kept trying to make it fit, and we kept trying to explain it where it would. And we just took a step back after we got enough feedback from enough food truck owners in our local community and said, let's quit trying to make it fit, and let's create a subchapter under, or category underneath the existing chapter that includes solicitors and peddlers, because they still exist, and they serve a purpose, and they do what they do. But mobile food units, which is what the state actually identifies them as, food trucks, there's a specific, there's specific inspections, there's inspect, there's all these different criteria that fall under that. It's like, why don't we adopt what's already out there? So, not only did we look at the Ohio Revised Code and the information behind that, we looked at the fire code inspection, what the health department locally does, as well as the state. And we, actually, some good input from a gentleman that owns a food truck in this community as well, that said, listen, we do this in Columbus, or I've done this in Toledo. So, we reached out to those local communities, and I tried to identify what they do to make this as easy as possible for us to manage it, hold people accountable, but also for you to do your business. We don't want this any more complicated than it has to be. So, keeping it simple for everyone involved, that's where we really started this. So, what this is, is we actually, again, added that subchapter, or subcategory under Chapter 767. And we literally used the criteria and identified the certain things that apply to mobile food units. And it's essentially, the balance here is, we want the local individuals that are business owners, as well as in our region that live here and work here. The frustration we saw were, people would come in over the weekends and set up shop for, on a Saturday, when it's not necessarily easily enforced, and they're gone. And you guys are following all the rules, getting your permits and everything. So, how do we establish that balance that we're holding everyone accountable? So, we worked with our income tax, our fire department, our zoning, all the different areas, and we came up with the criteria that the application is specific for mobile food units, pretty generic demographic information, and then the documents, and it's a checklist for us to make sure when these are all done and we're accounted for, then the permit would then be issued. But it's a driver's license of the owner, because we understand that the individual probably has different people working for them. The owner might be working in the truck, and they might have individuals other than them working in the truck. What if you have multiple trucks, right? So, we understand that when you have businesses and you have employees that work for you. The State of Ohio, a State of Ohio Department of Health Food and Services permit that needs to be included, and that's a standardized application across, inspection across the state of Ohio. Initially, we had a Finley Fire Department inspection, and it's attached. I actually had conversation to some of the feedback we received via email from people that might come in from Columbus or Toledo for an event or a weekend, that a hands-on or onsite inspection from our fire department might not be as practical. So, I've had discussion with our fire chief, who was initially pretty adamant about this, and I said, listen, what if a professional fire service in Columbus or Toledo, or name your community, is doing this, and we have record of that from a professional fire service? We feel that that would, that would actually serve its purpose if that would be able to be provided to us. The propane pressure tank test leak inspection, that has to be done by a certified inspector for those types of situations. It's only applicable, obviously, to the people that have propane. Some don't use propane, so it's not applicable to that unit. Certification of liability, which is pretty standard- Certification of liability, which is pretty standard across a lot of things. And then the licensing fee, which is a hundred dollars annually. And that is very standard to other communities and what they're doing. One thing that we have changed, we had very specific conversation with the police chief about this, is we currently with solic, the current chapter of solicitor and peddlers, we have a background check that's required to be done. And then we got into the fundamental conversation about, well, if the business owner is providing this information and it's his business, we're not, it could be enter anybody to actually run that business in that day. So, we've actually slacked back on that aspect of actually requiring that background check. But we have the demographics of the business owner. There's, I think there's something, actually up here, I missed it. It's actually not the documents that are included, but the ENI number for the business because then we can actually attack and track the, for the business, for the income tax. So, those are the main criteria that we followed. Again, we felt these were reasonable. We felt that these would meet all the criteria that we needed to as the city of Findlay to assure a safe, not only a unit, but the food being distributed was safe. All the checks and balances were there. Creating the efficiency for you as an outlet, not you necessarily sir, but somebody coming from another community could do this electronically to then submit these to the mayor's office and then it could be, the actual license could be then provided to you. Now, the license itself, we have certain officers in our department that's, they go out and they enforce these things. We want the officers on the weekends and whatnot to be able to go into and have a visual cue for that license to be current. So, we've talked about different options and the one was a sticker, a visible sticker that an officer going through wherever area could see that food truck and say, this year it's orange. They're current. And then if it's not current or visible, it would prompt them to actually go and have a conversation to make sure that individual is licensed within the city of Findlay. So, I think I, I've given a real broad stroke of what we've tried to do. Am I hitting on what you?
I think you went over, I think for everyone that's not familiar with food trucks.
Okay.
That helps them out, but that just kind of summarized what we already know as food truck owners.
Okay. You know more about it than me, so.
Yeah, and I think it's like, I'm happy to have a conversation with you all. Like, like my experience, I mean, just for the firefighter example, like, reach out to Toledo, they have a big, beginning of March.
Rodeo.
A big rodeo.
Yes.
Like, come up there and like, bring firefighters up there. And like, it's, you knock down about almost a thousand food trucks in one weekend.
And we actually, not to interrupt you, we actually discussed the food truck rodeo concept. Actually, health department, everyone be in one centralized location on a date. And we didn't feel at this point with the volume of food trucks for our community, that that made sense. But we actually looked at it and we think it's a really great opportunity in the future as this continues to grow. So, we saw that and we're like, that's a great model to follow. But we didn't feel that we had enough local to support that.
I think like, you'll see like, kind of like opening up, not having the background checks. It'll be a larger pool of food trucks coming into Findlay. So, more money coming into Findlay, more dollars coming into Findlay. But you're really, I think one of the points I wanted to talk about is like, you know, are we allowed downtown? I think that's something that we're like concerned, like, as a festival, we're allowed downtown. Or is it just an exception because of a festival? We just, you know, we want to serve our community. We have, as food truck owners, we have loyal customers, we have people travel to Findlay to come see us. So, I just want to have some confidence going into next year. What, how can I plan?
Well, John, and I'm going to add on to that. I had conversations with a couple of folks on festivals and actually the language that talks about downtown is the same that it is now. And I would, I would assume that special events gives you, the special event permit gives you the permission to come to Oktoberfest or events like that. And I would ask that we look at adding language into 767.05, paragraph A. Yeah, paragraph A to speci, no. 767.01, paragraph A to specifically say that special events permits allow food trucks to operate on, in downtown on public, on public streets. Just to, just to make clarification. And the second point John made is that he doesn't think that food truck owners might be well versed at reading municipal code. I would assume that there's going to be a public campaign using more common, simpler language to discuss or to promote this to the, to the food truck community. Can you speak to what you have planned for that, Mr. Martin?
So, the, two weeks ago after the last conversation at council, we actually reached out through all the existing food truck vendors and communicated with them as well as, Chamber of Commerce, thank you. To have them then disseminate this information. Now, it was pretty much an overview as well as the ordinance to give you that information. But we absolutely will do a rollout of this and try to make it as user friendly for people that don't understand the business or at your level, that we can actually share this, that people understand what the rules are of engagement and, you know, what the criteria are. So, it's very user friendly.
Yeah. And to that, just like that 767.01, like, as a player do that, but like, it's like, we can't be within 400 feet of Main Street. But then we go to 767.05, we can be within 100 feet of a restaurant downtown. Or does that, like, is this a little confusion there? Like, it's not, you know, consistent or like easily, again, applicable to someone that's reading it for the first time. And this, they want to do the right thing, as food truck owners, we want to do the right thing. But it's just very confusing. Like, oh, I commit to this gig or like, you know, want to partner with somebody. And like, we just don't know if that's an option.
I'll just provide a couple of quick comments. First of all, we appreciate the feedback. One of the reasons we wanted to put it out kind of as is, is so that we would hear where the questions were. So, we can now put together some frequently asked questions. And then our plan was early next year to go through and have, gather that information and communicate it back out to folks. And then if necessary, kind of set up a meeting to discuss it further on each of your questions. The main thing is we don't want a food truck just going in and setting up in a parking spot out front of somebody's business and taking away from them. So, that's why you have to have either an event permit or a, or be leasing space from somebody's parking lot. So, you will absolutely be able to continue to participate in festivals and do your partnership, you know, with Findlay Brewing Company. Obviously, I have to be able to walk over and get my burrito. So, we will, that is obviously a part of it. When you do something at like the Performing Arts Center, they provide us a list and say, as part of their event permit and say, here's who we have coming. And at times we've said, that person can't come, they're not registered. Or hey, they need to get it to us today while they're in town because they're missing that one. Like, we will definitely work through that. The big thing is that we want it to be fair and consistent across everyone. We don't want organizations coming in and taking advantage of us not having a clean process. And then we also just, and we want to try to make it as simple for you guys. So, that's why, you know, utilizing outside entities that are reputable, evaluations and forms is what we're achieving. But we'll follow up with you. Or if you want to shoot us an email, we would love to be able to kind of, we can go section by section and kind of explain it.
Yeah.
Obviously, ordinances have to be written in legalese.
Yes.
So, we won't be able to put every clarification in there, but we appreciate the feedback and certainly your investment in Findlay.
Okay.
Can I give you this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions or comments for John?
Thank you. Please, please reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, not right. Rob, in addition, on the, on the comments you've heard, a couple of other items. I did, I mentioned at the last meeting that I would discuss with folks in the DFID concerning expanding the prohibition area that John just mentioned, that is currently Main Street and 400 feet from Main Street to be the, increase it to the DFID boundaries. And talked with the DFID and a couple of the restaurants within the downtown. I would say at most they were favorable but not super excitedly so. I think they saw the, I think they saw the, or understand the intent and that, and with that, I would wondered if you, if you had had other comments about expanding that to the DFID boundaries.
That, I've had a lot of comments from people, but that one really, I hadn't heard feedback other than the conversation at council. So, open for that discussion and the practicality of what you all feel. Willing to look at that.
You know, I don't know how we want to do an amendment process to the rest of council, but that is something that I think should be added to, added to the ordinance. And obviously, that takes two people to request that the legislation be changed or we can do it by show of hands or we can do it at the meeting, at the next meeting. And along with that, there is also, and John mentioned this, the 100-foot limit being next to another, next to a brick and mortar restaurant. And the thought, I, I think that's kind of, that's kind of small. I would personally rather see that like 100 yards, 300 feet at a minimum. Because I think about the restaurant that just comes to mind is the, is the Italian place on North Main Street, just south of the, of Glenwood. And why does that, why is it all right for a pizza truck to set up in front of 101 feet from that versus being, you know, kept off of Main Street and downtown? I, I just, I want to protect that brick and mortar restaurant as much as I want to protect others. And I think if they had an additional, if that distance was farther than just 100 feet, it would, it would serve the purpose. And the last item is, and it, there's some numbering and lettering things that need to be updated in this ordinance that are inconsistent. And the last one is, there's some reference to peddlers that they need to have a driver's license. And I asked a question to Rob Feiner if, if that means you have to have a legal driver's license in order to have a solicitor, peddler, or ignorant merchant. Could, what does somebody do if they've lost their driver's license, their driver's privileges? And think that it would make sense that we expand that to be driver's license or state or federal ID. And just some changes to that. But this is interestingly one that I've, an ordinance that I've heard a lot of, a lot more comment than I kind of expected. Other comments? Mr. Diarmant?
Just for clarification, you're saying DFID would basically like to ban food trucks from the whole downtown? Is that what you're saying?
No, not, not from downtown, but from public infrastructure in downtown. So, they can't simply set up on a street in the DFID area or in a public alley. It doesn't prevent that, doesn't prevent them from running, or from being on private property. Nothing in this, in this talks about keeping it from private property. But it extends the same protections to the Findlay Inn, the protections that Logan's has because Logan's is on, on Main Street. Findlay Inn is 400 feet off of Main Street, but all, but also in the DFID. So, is it okay that we let a food truck set up right in front of Findlay Inn's entranceway on a public street and look to take away 10 or 20% of their Friday night business? That's, that's the logic of it. And so, expanding it to the DFID boundary gives a little, on the margin, added benefit to the DFID property owners because their properties enjoy that protection.
Just a lot to chew on there.
Why I'm bringing it up on second reading. Other questions or comments?
First reading for ordinance 2024-149. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
As this ordinance is a donation to the Findlay Fire Department, I move that council statutory rules be suspended and ordinance 2024-149 be given its second and third reading. Second, Mr. Palmer. We have a motion to suspend in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Council statutory rules have been suspended and ordinance 2024-149 will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-149, ordinance 2024-149.
Mr. Greeno?
Move for adoption of ordinance 2024-149?
Second, Mr. Wobser, discussion. Thanks to the folks who made these donations. Wow, very appreciative. And with that, all those in favor of this ordinance, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2024-150. An ordinance authorizing the mayor's service safety director and our city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the 1800 Tiffin Avenue Access Utilities Product Number 31947300. Appropriating and transferring funds are to and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2024-151. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Seeing as though this is a acceptance of grant money, I make a motion that council statutory rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading. Second, Mr. Baumann. All in favor of suspending council statutory rules and giving, having this ordinance be given its second and third reading? Please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Council statutory rules have been suspended and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-151, ordinance 2024-151.
Mr. Wobser?
Make a motion to approve 2024-151.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Mayor Martin?
One quick item. I would just encourage you as you go out this evening to look at the new snowflakes that were put up with a portion of this grant, along with funds from DFID and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We are updating some of the downtown decorations.
All right.
Other discussion? All those in favor of this ordinance, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
E, aye, yes.
What? Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2024-152. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Jim, do you need this?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
This needs to be done before the year ends. Therefore, I move that council statutory rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno. We have a motion to suspend council statutory rules and give this ordinance a second and third reading. All in favor, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ordinance 2024-
No vote.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
And Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Council statutory rules have been suspended and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-152, ordinance 2024-152.
Mr. Greeno?
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2024-152?
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion. All in favor of this ordinance, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms., Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
And Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2024-153. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Seeing as though this is, once again, accepting grant money, I move that council statutory rules be suspended and ordinance 2024-153 be given its second and third reading. Second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspending council statutory rules, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann? Mr. Baumann? Mr. DiArmond? Ms. Frishy? Mr. Greeno? Mr. Hellman? Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer? Mr. Russell? Ms. Warnicki? Mr. Wobser?
Council statutory rules have been suspended and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-153, ordinance 2024-153.
Mr. Wobser?
Motion to approve 2024-153.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. All those in favor of ordinance 2024-153, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. DiArmond? Ms. Frishy? Mr. Greeno? Mr. Hellman? Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer? Mr. Russell? Ms. Warnicki? Mr. Wobser? Mr. Baumann?
The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2024-154 was removed from the, from our agenda onto old business. Mr. Wobser?
Going back to our budget situation, when we had, at the end of our meeting last Tuesday, a week ago today, we had discussed coming to council and asking for council to vote to ask the administration to go back and make a 4% cut in their current budget. That 4% brings us under our 2026, stays out of our reserves fund, reserve funds in 2026. That was essentially where the 4% came from. And that's just simply half of what they normally send back to us on average every year. I think this is a good way to look at our current situation. Has nothing to do with the fact that our administration does a super job of administering and taking care of the city in that regard. That has never been a discussion. But we've never been in the situation where we're dipping into our reserve fund. So this is a different world that we're looking at right now. We're also looking at an economic situation that we're not really sure about as the economy ebbs and flows. There's a lot of unknowns. And all I'm asking is for the administration to come back, cut the budget deficit by a little bit. If the money comes in, appropriations, we'll be glad to sit down and appropriate more money if we've got it. So I would make a motion that council approve that request of the administration.
We have a motion. Second, Ms. Frishy, discussion. Ms. Warnicki?
What's your timeline on that, Jeff?
We have to, the administration can get that done. We have to approve that by our first meeting on the 7th. And what we're talking about is an overall, we're not telling them where to take it from, but that we just have to look at 4% difference in what they currently sent to us. We're not going to, now, Jim, you can talk to, we're not going to get into a temporary budget situation. That causes more headaches than it's worth. So we'd have to get it done ahead of time.
Mr. DiArmond?
So I've spent a fair amount of time the last couple of weeks looking at this budget. And I guess I'm just losing confidence in our ability to forecast the revenue. So I talked about this earlier in the meeting, and the auditor didn't like my math projection. So let's forget that piece. Let's just look, I really wanted to be specific about the 2024 budget, revenue budget, you know? And it got derailed into a bunch of different directions. But specific to that, you know, the current projection is $35,770. And if you divide that by the projection, the beginning of the year projection was 29,250. I mean, we were, we're, the projection's off by 22.3%. Now let that settle in for a second. 22.3% is how far the revenue projection was from what we're saying now and what it was a year ago. And so we have, we have a 16% gap between revenue and expenses. That's, that's a lot. I mean, it's, that's no joke. I mean, so the administration, you guys got a lot of work to do to close the gap. I mean, two weeks ago, I was supportive of lowering the budget by 4%. But now, between just losing confidence in our ability to project the revenue and just, you know, Ginger, I thought, gave a great example of explaining the fund accounting. And I understand that better now. And just lowering the expense budget, you're going to play more accounting games. And we're already making year-end adjustments to balance budgets so we can run the business. And I just think lowering it, you're just going to make it more difficult to run the business. I mean, it doesn't, still doesn't balance the budget. And there's still a lot of work to be done, you know? And so I guess for those two reasons, Jeff, I'm just no longer supporting lowering the budget at this point.
Ms. Frishy?
Dan, I guess you're, you're not confident in the budget. So have you, because you're not confident with the auditor and you're confident with the mayor, are you feeling confident enough that we're not going to end up in a hole and having to make tougher decisions later? Like, I thought, I mean, your, your vocalness at the budget meeting was very vocal, similar to Jeff, that it's not hurting anybody. So why the sudden change? If it's not hurting anybody and we can continue to appropriate money if we need to? I mean, the no confidence in the budget, it sounds like you're not confident in the auditors and you guys maybe need to sit down. But what are we hurting?
Mr. Wobser?
I would defer to Dan to answer.
Okay, I have, I was, I'm next, because I'm just keeping order of when people raise hands. And I don't think anybody should be really surprised at the change of our, of our personnel costs that came in this, in this current budget. We just went through high inflationary times, which I think during, Jeff, your and my tenure on council is a new one. We consistently struggled to get applicants, let alone hire police and fire really anyone into the city because our pay lagged locally and regionally. And it's kind of the same with the private sector. The inflationary times hurt, hurt their ability to hire too. And it's, and it's not just Findlay, it's not just Ohio, I think it's nationwide. I think I heard there was a 14% pay increase for enlisted personnel in the latest defense bill. So this is, this isn't just a Findlay problem. Jeff, I do share the concerns about structural imbalance in the budget. And it's because in our, in our time, it's always been a kind of a race between inflation and, and the ability of income to increase, income revenue to, sales tax, or income tax revenue to increase. Income tax kept up, if not stayed a little bit ahead until the last few years of inflationary budgets or inflationary times. And now, income tax is really, is definitely stretched. And, and given that, you know, thank God we have the large general fund balance that we do because it gives us time to adjust. For over a decade, we have been doing budgets simply like this. And we, and we know it works. And for proof, we just look at the, the general fund balance that we have. The fact that we have, I would think that we're one of the envies of municipal governments in Ohio, the fact that we are sitting on as much money that, that we have. And it gives us the ability and the time to adjust. And I think, how does that work and why does that work? I think it, one of the big things, it's, it's based on, it's based on cooperation and trust, cooperation and trust between the administration, the council, and the, and the rank and file staff of the city. And I think what we've done, at least from my experience working in municipal, municipal government prior to coming to Findlay, that we've, we've broken this use it or lose it mentality that most governments have. Come December, it becomes silly spending time because if you don't spend your budget, you're going to lose your budget. If you don't spend all your budget, you're not going to get as much the next year. So you start spending money foolishly. Well, that doesn't happen in Findlay. Findlay, our departments turn back, turn back unspent budgets and they don't get penalized for it the next year. And that trust is the magic, is the magic glue, I think, that makes it happen. Because the, the rank and file work like heck because they know the dollar they're saving is a dollar buffer that, that protects them when times get tough. And I think now, times are tough and we're, we are now, we, council are talking about breaking the trust and cooperation on our part that we give to the city personnel to address their situation led by the administration. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want that to happen. I think that, I think over the, over the time, this, the city has, the staff and the administration has earned my trust and gained my trust to be able to handle this. I think that regular reporting in 2025 as, as to how we progress is a must. But I think we need to continue to work, go with what works as we go into 2025 and use the budget, the budget surplus that we have to our advantage and continue to trust our rank and file employees to do the right thing.
Mr. DiArmond?
I just, to Holly, I guess, I just think lowering the budget by 4% just doesn't solve the problem. I just think it makes it harder to run the business. And I just think that we're going to need to watch it much closer than we did last year. I mean, I just think, for sure.
Jeff, Jeff, thank you.
We're going to watch the revenues, Jeff.
Ms. Frishy?
Grant, you know, you talk about trust and we have to trust, nobody's not saying that we're not wanting to work with the administration. And you have to remember, we've always trusted the administration and, and we had some downturns, some big downturns. We had tax deferrals that saved people's butts in the administration side to get us through. But we had our downturns. We, we almost lost firemen. We had to pay a fire truck off in full. I mean, there was a lot of things that have happened and it can happen. And we have recognized, I think, that we, as Findlay, are in a bubble. And in our bubble, we usually trickle a year behind what we're seeing in the rest of the economy. And so we don't know what the next two years are going to be like, looking like. These numbers are out of sorts. And, and I guess, to be blunt, if you wholly trust the administration and feel that the city does a great job and you're not interested in having some more give and take and really doing more of the job of a city councilman, maybe be a citizen.
Mr. Stajak?
I'm not going to speculate as to why Mr. DiArmond's taking the approach that he is, but he's, he's done two things with our finances. One ended up because of a phone call he made costing us more in banking next year. This one is misleading at best. Your revenues change and they change for different reasons. The fact of the matter is, I personally projected that you were going to end this year with $23 million in your general fund. If the administration buckles down and turns back more money and doesn't end up with a deficit that today it looks like they're going to end up with in 2024, then maybe you can get to that 23 number. And I hope that happens. But you shrank your general fund irregardless of the projections you want to talk about and the numbers you want to use, from well over $31 million down to about $21 million this year. We have spent, and we can be proud, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of energy and a lot of effort building reserves, building self-insurance, building a rainy day fund, raising the minimum reserve to protect this city to get you to this moment in time. You, as a city council, are the first city council in the history of this community that I'm aware of in my lifetime that has an opportunity to slow the budget train down before you have to do something dramatic. And it is no fun doing something dramatic. And here, here's the biggest part. Fortunately, you have cash balances. The faster you spend those cash balances, the more risk you put yourself in because they don't slow down. Once they start going down, and Mr. Wobser made a very good point at your budget meeting, a slowdown in an economy isn't seen in the city budget for one to two years. So good luck to you. Your, your choice, your time, your moment. But you certainly tonight have an opportunity to take some steps to protect this community well into the future and to show them the right way to do it. The other thing I'll say is, the goal was, in, in working with Ginger and having her speak the last couple of minutes, was that you would pass ordinance one as it sits today and make a request of the administration, should you choose to do so, that they recommend by department, personal services, and other, what dollars should be de-appropriated out of ordinance one by, a reasonable amount of time would be this, the first meeting in February. And that would be a very simple way to do it, should you choose to do so. But I can tell you, I have seen now twice in my career here with the city, one in Mr. Martin's seat and once in this seat, the impact on your employees, of the stress of the money not being there and the impact on your productivity and the impact on the general well-being on the city as a whole. And I, for one, particularly since you've had this moment, will never support an increase in our taxes out there when we had this moment, if we squander it. So we need to do it, we need to do it right, and you guys have to choose how you're going to do it. And there's no, there's no right or wrong one way, but there's multiple ways. But choose a good one, please.
Mayor Murn?
One of the things, so as the auditor just reiterated, it's the desire for process to pass the budget at the first meeting as it's so that we don't, so poor Ginger and the team don't have to go through and edit everything. What we have discussed with our department is that as they work through the, the year, if they have utilized an item, that they do not, that they think they have expended the full expenditure of what comes out of that line item because some hit, expenses hit earlier in the year than others. We are committed to working with our departments to identify on a monthly or quarterly basis money that can be turned in at that point in time because we also don't want to have money appropriated into a budget that then we don't have the ability to do other things with. We recognize that, we want to do that, we want that flexibility. We also don't want people panicking that the cliff is coming. So we have a, we will do that, we can do that. But I think that arbitrarily saying, let's cut four across, that becomes very difficult to manage because sometimes one department needs more in a line item. And they have flexibility within those two buckets to move money to different expense line items to do that. So I, I think that having this approach, we take it very seriously, we understand, we understand their trust you're putting in us. The department heads know it loud and clear, sitting through budget hearings as well as our meetings that we have with them. We will, just as we did in years past, go over their expenses on a monthly budget, see items that are out of line and look at opportunities for savings. And then something that we haven't done in the past is throughout the year, we will look to de-appropriate and, and send funds back to you guys to show that we are taking those efforts. But I think, and across the board, just pick things and work through what you think is going to happen is much more difficult than you realize.
Jeff, point of clarification, given what the auditor said and what Ginger said at the budget hearings, do I understand your motion is, is to request the 4%? And you would be okay with the deappropriation language by the first meeting in February versus the 001 ordinance on first meeting in January?
Correct.
Thank you. Other discussion? Everybody understand the motion we're, we're going to vote on? So we have a motion to request the administration to drop 4% from the budget and present that at the first meeting in February, and that motion was seconded. We'll do a voice vote on this. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann?
Nay.
Mr. DiArmond? Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Nay.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Nay.
Ms. Warnicki?
Nay.
And Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Other old business. Ms. Frishy?
Just wanted to follow up, the mayor brought up CRAs. I know there's been discussion on that, that we've been trying to address our citywide CRA. I had sent an email to you, so if you can get me all that information, that would be beautiful, so I can get up to date on what's actually going on.
New business. New business. And with that, we have, uh, we'll move into public communication, we have one tonight. Uh, Mr. Dan Kelly would like to talk about cannabis dispensaries. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for hanging on. Mr. Kelly is from Ward Seven.
Thank you very much, can everybody hear me? Yep, red lights on. Um, anyway, I won't take a whole lot of time here to, uh, express my sentiments because as I understand it, we're going to have a little bit more time to talk about the dispensaries. Uh, but by way of background, um, I want you folks to know, um, I, uh, have a, I hold a doctorate in toxicology conferred by the University of Arkansas Medical Sciences. And, um, I've been in the, uh, business of toxicology for about thirty years, which I hate to admit, but. Um, and my, the beginning of my career was, uh, primarily dealt with the FDA in Washington DC. And I read with interest, I just got back because I wanted to, to follow up with, uh, Mayor Mern's comment about snowflakes. I got ahead of the great snowmaking machine as I went over to visit my family in the Syracuse, New York area and then got waylaid before getting back, but I was glad to see uh, the headline story about these dispensaries and it may be too late. Um, initially I tried to publish a, uh, an, a viewpoint article and apparently I was a bit too late, it was just before the referendum, uh, became active for the state and then of course for Findlay. I was pleased to see that Findlay, I think if recollection serves me correctly, uh, voted sixty, forty, nay, yea. Um, the state unfortunately, uh, voted sixty, forty, yea, nay. And-
Mr. Mr. Kelly, the city voted fifty-two in favor, forty-eight against.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I stand corrected then, okay, um, I'm sorry? Yes, okay, um, anyway, um, I'm, I'll probably have a, a, a bit, uh, more to say at, uh, the next city council meeting, but one thing that interesting, interested me about the article that I saw in the paper today is that initially the city council, and not everybody here may have been a city council member at the time, but they voted to prohibit, uh, the dispensaries. And then a couple of years after two thousand and sixteen, they, uh, voted to, um, for a moratorium and then eventually to have these dispensaries, dispensaries in the Findlay area and I was just curious about the history. Can anybody answer for me why the prohibition was rejected and we moved on to, uh, to, uh, permit these dispensaries? Jeff, go ahead, please.
Well, the, we, the prohibition is actually still in place until we get the new zoning laws put into place. So they're still prohibited. Those were put into place though, back when the law, the referendum came through and there was a lot of questions about what was actually the state law going to look like, which it's getting better, but I don't think it's completed yet, correct, Mayor? So we decided to put that into place at that point in time, so we didn't have them potentially buying property and being grandfathered in to a place that we may not necessarily want them, so it's pretty well worked exactly like we had expected.
Um, is there any, uh, room in the law to actually prohibit dispensaries?
You can't
Yes.
prohibit them in Ohio, you can prohibit them in the city of Findlay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But doesn't say anything that happens right over the city line, though.
Okay. Um, alrighty, um, anyway, the last comment that I would like to make is to, to get everybody to understand and I'll expand on this. Hopefully we'll get a little bit more time to, to speak about this. From my background, medical marijuana and recreational marijuana are not the same, okay? Medical marijuana is prescribed, there's somewhat, a, a bit of control about that. Recreational marijuana is not, okay? And we're talking about potency anywhere in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five percent more than when I was in college and graduate school. So, um, I just want to alert folks to that. And the public safety gentleman here, you're going to have your work cut out for you, unfortunately, so.
Questions for-
Hope we don't rue the day.
Questions for Mr. Kelly. And Mr. Kelly, if you'd please stop over, uh, when the meeting's over, I want to confirm your email address, thank you.
You're welcome, okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing as though we have no other business, uh, make, take a motion to adjourn, Mr. Ballman.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Palmer. All in favor of adjournment for the year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay and let's we are adjourned. Mr. Kelly.